This meeting of the July 31th, Mount Airy Planning Commission will come to order. We'll begin with a pledge to allegiance.
A pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to, before we start, Bill, that I had a couple of citizens contact me and say that they really want to make sure that people are speaking into their microphones, not like this or like that, but directly to your microphone, because they can't hear us out in public land.
Okay, all right. All right, Planning Commission members, if you have reviewed the minutes of the June 12th meeting, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ralph is second, all right. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Flag sign, all right, and it passes. Yep, understood, understood. Okay, minutes approved. Citizen comments. We will ask you to come forward and announce your name and your home address here in Mount Airy, and then you can give us what you wish to share. We will say, if someone else has already said what was on your mind, your primary point, then we'd ask you to hold off. We want to try to get around to everybody, and we've got several here. First one I have is Carl Munder.
It was...
You want to wait?
Yeah, I'll wait for it when the topic actually comes up on the agenda.
All right.
Chairman, thank you.
Cecily Bedwell.
I'll wait as well.
Okay. Ron Thompson, you want to wait? Okay. Let's see. Dave Bowersox, do you want to wait?
Hey, Bill, why don't we just see who would like to talk at the citizen...
All right, who would like to talk?
And if they get up and speak, that they just get their name and that they're a resident of Mount Airy or not. They don't have to give their address.
Okay, don't think we have anybody. All right, well then, let me see. This looks like a Frederick County resident, Justin.
Oh, sorry, I think I signed up.
Okay.
That's the only sheet that's up there.
All right. Hannah Weber.
That's our county planner for...
County planner, all right.
Again, I don't think that's just a sign-in sheet, not a sign-in sheet to speak.
Yep. Uh, let's see. Sean Kelly. No. Nicole Moon.
I wait.
Okay. All right, Ed Wormall. Going to wait, okay. Mike Wiley.
Wait five, six.
Okay, all right. Anyone else who would like to speak? So come to the microphone, give us your name and your local address, we'll go from there, okay? I don't guess we have anybody who wants to speak. All right. No citizen comments. Then how about our planners? Is Hannah here? There she is. I like it, folks, we're moving right along.
Good evening, everybody. At Carroll County, I just have two updates for you all. At your last meeting, we discussed the water and sewer chapters for the town of Mount Airy. That was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in one of their open session meetings, and that was sent to MDE for their approval. Once MDE sends their approval, that will be the official approval of the water and sewer master plan for Carroll County. And then another update is we are still processing our transportation master plan. This will go along with our general plan as in our master plan for 2025. That is still underway, and we are still working with the Planning Commission on that. So that's all I have.
Okay, anybody have any questions or any input?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a very quick input, and I think I voiced this at the last meeting, Hannah. First off, thank you. I think it's fair to say that the county's efforts in water and sewer on your master plan and the transportation, I know it's forthcoming, would, it would be prudent for the commission to be informed by both of those products as we go through our current effort for our 2023.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll get those or request those.
Well, so the transportation master plan, we have already coordinated with John with the planned major streets for that specific chapter, but you guys will have the chance to review it when it's done going through our process.
And then the last part of that is relevant again to your master plan. Do you see any downstream additional sections, natural resources, et cetera?
We do have an environmental chapter in our 2014 plan, so I would imagine that would continue into the 2025 plan. The only additional chapter I know is happening is the housing chapter, and that's now, that's being required by state law, so that's, we're also doing a housing study to come, but that's another chapter that we'll be adding into our general plan.
Yeah, and a note on that is, as a personal opinion, that housing chapter is critical.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Very critical, at the municipality or the county level, so anything you craft in that is going to be helpful as we look in the next 10 years, so.
Absolutely. Like I said, we're doing, not officially, the, we don't have the official consultant yet, but we are going to do a housing study.
Interesting.
Yes, just to prepare us for that, because we haven't done one.
That'll encompass Mount Airy?
I'm pretty sure it'll encompass the Carroll County side. I'm not sure the details, it's not my project, but I can find out for you.
All right, good, good, okay. Thanks so much, Hannah.
Okay, thank you, have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Justin, we have the same concerns and requests of you as well in terms of the work that we're kicking off, hoping to finalize before too long on our 2023 master plan update.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, good evening, Planning Commission members. I don't really have too much to share. We did announce our new director of planning and division, or director of division of planning and permitting. Deborah Carpenter is, her appointment is going to take effect August 14th. South Frederick Corridors, a workshop was held in front of the Planning Commission on 7/12. The Sugarloaf Rural Heritage Overlay District, there was a public hearing on July 20th. Public comment is now closed. The city of Frederick, East Street Form-Based Code, the final public workshop was on July 24th, and an updated document is coming forward. And then we just had our quarterly Frederick County Planning Municipality meeting on the 27th, and we had representatives from the state of Maryland as well as the public schools there. And then I did bring the maps that you requested of growth.
Justin, one of the, one of the things we would request for you to update is the additional development going forward in Frederick County, especially in the southwest quadrant. I mean, that's the one adjacent to New Market and closest to us, and we've been affected by that additional development quite a bit in the past, so we're concerned about it, we want to be aware of it, and any updates you can give us in terms of additional development, we would appreciate.
One of the items that I am working on, we're working on updating it for the last quarter, but it is a map, or it is an Excel sheet of all the subdivisions at the county level and at the municipal level that are going on. And unfortunately, most of the New Market stuff is at the county level. One of the pipeline, a little snippet of it was thrown in there, and a lot of the, there's only one big development in the municipal level at New Market, and that's Calumet. I know there was issues with their, it was in some form of litigation with the water and sewer, but I don't, I think that's getting worked out, but I know Gordon Mill was the last subdivision that was approved, and that was, there's a lot going on with that. And I know one that's coming up is the Casey property, which is being renamed Cherry Run. I think Rogers did have like a public engagement event at, in the town of New Market. I think that was on the 20th.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, Justin did bring in some maps, which I gave you guys all copies of, so I think he might go over those now.
Did you, sorry, just, did you say you met with the schools or representative of...
Yeah, they were at our quarterly meeting. They did show us where, there's the, the master plan for the facilities for the school that is on their website, and they did mention how that works and just some of the APFO stuff that they go through and look at. It's a pretty comprehensive document, it is on their website.
Thank you.
And again, please, if you can, try to talk into the mic so your microphone's over here.
Sorry.
So you just got to put it towards your mouth.
Thank you.
And within four to five inches.
And this is the map from our comprehensive plan. The area highlighted in red, that's really where we're anticipating most of our development. The South Frederick Corridors, South Frederick Corridors plan that I mentioned earlier that we're working on, that's the white part below the city of Frederick. It's anticipated that we'll have 10,000 dwelling units in there, and I know in the city, there's a bunch going on too, so most of, the plan is to concentrate most of the mixed use and denser developments, so there's less development pressure elsewhere and along the transit corridors or anticipated transit corridors along 270, that's really other areas that we expect as the primary growth areas. This is a map of the New Market region and where its growth boundaries are. On the next slide, I have a more close-up of the development, but that is also the pipeline of, a snippet of the document that I'm creating that does have what was approved and what is being developed. As you can see, most of it is outside the municipal boundary of New Market, it's just Calumet, and at the very bottom of that list too, that, those are the newer projects, the Casey property and Gordon Mill as well as Cromwell, but Cromwell is age restricted.
Okay, the one that jumps off the page here is Linganore Eaglehead.
And that's from existence till now of what's been developed. There are a few, I would say it's probably almost a little bit more than halfway built out, but I would also note too that just because something was approved, that doesn't necessarily mean that that number's going to get actually developed.
Well, the extent to which during the course of the year, you can give us a projection on projected new development units in that sector, close to us, we would appreciate knowing that in advance.
Okay.
I had a question about that. Am I missing it, or maybe we can get an update? The growth area map, it says the NM dash and has the numbers, but I don't see them matching the table down below.
Yeah, the table is like a cutout of it, I get, the more detailed document is on our website. We're in the process of updating, but I can make sure that everything, future updates will have...
Just so we could see which one, each one's talking about.
Yep. The next slide kind of shows you more detail of what is what. This is the developer's rights and agreement map that was created. It's a little old, it's from 2021, but I don't think anything's really changed. Some of the names aren't necessarily accurate. Number two is Gordon Mill, and number three is the Cherry Run, which is listed as the Casey property.
Any other questions? All right, sir. Thank you. And that brings us to Mount Airy Crossing. Introduction and discussion.
I will lead off by saying, we're not here to discuss the plan itself, we're here to figure out what is the next step in the process, and really determine if it's going to a public hearing, when and where the venue should be. That's really what we're trying to do today, it's not to discuss the plan, that'll happen at the public hearing, and really it's just to determine what's the next step for the plan moving forward through the Planning Commission, and then potentially on to the workshop, joint workshop with the town council, or whatever the next step will be. So again, copies are out in the foyer, and again, today, we're just trying to determine what the process is going to be. You know, is it a public hearing? Is the plan need more discussion in meetings or a charrette? It's really for you to determine what the next step would be. And again, I think we should, I don't know if we should take public comment from the developer, I think really as a body, you guys need to determine what's the next step moving forward, and when is that going to be? Again, I need approximately 45 days from the end, you know, by tomorrow, if, you know, to make a determination what we're going to do, because if we need to set the venue, I need to make sure availability, I need to make sure advertised, send that notifications, post the property, so I need a certain amount of time to do that to meet the code.
Okay.
I would think as a body, you guys should make a determination on what's the next step for the process, be it a public hearing, be it, you know...
All right. Comments, feedback?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And for the public, looking to the code for guidance on this for the commission's deliberation on this topic, the code reads, "The Planning Commission shall hold at least one charrette and separate public hearing at which members of the public shall be permitted to review the pre-concept sketch layout plan and make public comment." And then it goes further to discuss, as John alluded to, a certain timeframe where we give the public notice of the location and the date of whether that charrette or that public hearing will occur and where it will occur. So again, just as baseline for everybody's understanding, that's where we are per our code. And so now to that code guidance, it appears, unless I'm in error, that we can select either another charrette, or we can select proceed to the public hearing, and in either case, we could have more than one. In other words, if it serves the purpose of the residents to have an opportunity to address the changes that were made since the May charrette in full, an ample opportunity for them to do that, because I think complete understanding of the changes would be valuable for all parties to totally appreciate what movement was made from the initial pre-concept stage. We could have that multiple session option at play. Public comment generally is structured so that ultimately a goal within that session, however long it is set for, the public has an opportunity to approach the podium and express their opinion as to what's presented in the revised pre-concept sketch plan. And so again, I'm just laying out options here. I personally don't wish to speak to another charrette. I think at least a public hearing, if not two, would be appropriate, given the delta from the initial offering to what the developer has shown us in this revised plan. So possibly we could explore two public hearings, and then structure them so that we could either reserve the second one for that podium time, and perhaps the first one be the information exchange or presentation with some Q and A, perhaps, with the developer. Again, the goal there being in that first public hearing to have full appreciation and understanding of what's in the revised plan, so that any subsequent public comment is well-informed. Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
I would propose a charrette again for at least two day, so that way we can look over the revised plan, and I think it needs to be scheduled at least end of September, October timeframe would be my proposal.
Any other thoughts or feedback?
I think I'm a little torn on it. I think we've, we've had some charrette time. I think they've, we've gotten a lot of good feedback, a lot of good input, and I've sat through some of it, and I think, I don't know how much more we're going to get out of that though, at this point, compared to a public hearing. I feel that, I don't think we're going to get the changes that we want or that the people in the town want in a charrette, more so than the feedback, so I think I'm more open to the hearing.
Right, to be, oh, sorry. I was just going to say, because these plans are not set in stone, we can still have comment and feedback at a public hearing, the same as a charrette.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I agree, at least two public hearings, as long as there is really ample time for people to speak, and so I think that's got to definitely be incorporated into the timeframe of the, of the hearings.
Could, where, where could we have the public hearings? And could it be on something like a Saturday so that there's plenty of time, or, not to sacrifice everybody's Saturday, but I'm just wondering if that's, if an afternoon is enough time, or if we need a whole day?
I mean, yeah, I mean, you can choose to set the venue wherever you want, and the date, and the times that you want to do it. I mean, I'm not the one to tell you which way you want to go. I mean, if it's a Saturday and everybody's willing to volunteer and be there, and the developer's available, and we advertise it and let the citizens know about it, and, you know, be at the venue here or a different location, you know, it's really to be determined. I mean, currently, we don't have people going out the door, so I don't know, it might be adequate to have a public hearing in this space that could be recorded in-house and broadcast over Facebook or on our website. Or we can have it at an alternative location. It's really, it's really for you to make that determination.
I mean, clearly, the most spacious options would be the carnival grounds or the Legion.
Correct.
Right. And I'm not opposed to a public meeting, I just want to make sure that we have adequate comments and voice concerns and get good feedback, so that's my, that's my primary concern, and that's why I said a charrette, but I would be open to a public meeting as long as we have adequate time. Yeah, that's why I suggested maybe a Saturday to be...
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. Heather Wallace, town resident. So I just wanted to point out that while public hearings are great, especially when we get ample time to make comment, we don't really have the opportunity to ask questions of the developer. So if we could, I think one time we had something where the developer was set up for a couple hours before the public hearing, so just a thought.
Okay. There's some advantages to that. Mm-hmm. Any other comments or feedback?
I mean, I like the idea of having at least two days. I think if maybe we have, you know, a quick overview from the developer, and then we go into, you know, a Q and A, public comment, where people just get up and do that, and before that, we can encourage people to write letters if they want to write in, or if they have questions and they can't make it, and then we just stagger the dates.
Give us their feedback one way or the other?
Yeah, just so we have a chance to look over it, and then we can ask, even if people mail in questions or something like that, we can ask, or have the developer get the question ahead of time so they can answer it for us.
Okay.
So we get the feedback.
All right.
Minimum of 45 days, John.
Yeah, sounds like...
That's really what I would prefer to have, just so I can, you know, get, get it out in the papers, get it out on the websites, post the property, and send out mailings to all the adjoining property owners.
Well, this is a significant and important event, so I think to give it enough time and, and planning is paramount.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? All right, then, John, let's, let's proceed with those objectives and goals in mind.
So I guess I'm concerned about, you know, do you want to do it at a different location, or do you want to try it here in-house? You're saying two days, you're saying, I'm not sure, I don't have clear direction on what you want me to do. You know, I mean, I'm hearing two days, I'm hearing one day, I'm hearing charrette.
I thought, I thought it was two separate hearings, so two separate public hearings, one day or for each.
So I would take that as a public hearing, that we get some feedback, then the developer might change the plan in another public hearing, but then I'm hearing Steve saying it sounded like a two-day-ish kind of thing, so I'm just trying to be clear on where I'm heading and what I'm supposed to do.
In terms of venues, is your preference to try to have it here because, because CMC could capture it?
I think that would be the easiest, but not to say that's the best.
Okay.
I don't know if it is conducive with, you know, with that type of venue, but I'm not sure.
I think my, my thought was having it two separate days so that people could give the feedback they wanted to give back for this.
And have enough time.
Have enough time, and that we open it up to availability, so we can have it, you know, for people who can't make it like on a Monday night or Tuesday night, they can have another day to come in, and then maybe we can do it in a smaller location because we'll split it up.
So again, so what I'm understanding, and that's what I'm trying to be clear on, because I'm hearing two different public hearings, and I'm hearing a two-day public hearing, or two, two days that are close proximity to one hearing, basically.
Two public hearings, but the same thing.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so that's what Steve's saying, no, no, what you were saying was different, so what are you thinking about that?
Yeah, so, so let me answer in this oblique way. I think whether we have two consecutive days set for this next event, or whether we have them 30 days apart, I think in that interaction, it's feasible that based on the comments coming from either of those scenarios, the developer could make further revisions based on that input, whether it was two consecutive days input and interaction, or whether there were two sessions 30 days apart. Because, and I say that because the next step is the joint council-commission workshop, and I believe it would be fair to say, unless I'm corrected, that in the interim between the public hearings, consecutive or apart, the developer could very well digest that input yet again and make further revisions that now are presented to that workshop, reflecting some of the comments, some of the input from the public hearing. Is that, is that fair? Yep.
Yes.
Yep. So, so with that, I think it's, and I don't want to use the word expedite, but to move forward, having two consecutive days, as you mentioned, Steve, I think while the first day's information exchange focus would be fresh on everyone's minds, then those that want to come the second day and, and, you know, with their analysis and their well-informed understanding of what was said, can now get up and make a statement relative to those, to those areas. So two, so I think where we are, two consecutive days, 30 to 45 days hence, at a suitable location, and the question as to venue, I understand CMC, however, I'm kind of a go-big guy.
Yeah.
And if we have residents pushing out into the street, then, you know...
We're not capturing everybody's...
Right, we're starting to fight against the words "opportunity to exchange." You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, it becomes a bigger issue than the revised pre-concept plan.
So you're saying like a Wednesday... Sorry, are you saying like a Wednesday? Are you saying like a Wednesday, Saturday, or Friday, Saturday? That's what I'm just trying to figure out. So that when I go and try to secure a facility, difficulties are if we do it on a Wednesday and then on a Saturday, then whatever venue we use, we have to break down and rebuild and make sure that they're both available on those two days. And just trying to, logistically trying to understand what you want me to pine towards, you know, so I don't know, which is fine. I mean, if it's, if it's a Wednesday, Saturday, or Friday, Saturday.
The preference.
I just want to make sure that we have, for the people that can't attend the first day, to be able to attend the second day. Because of sports and other things that are going on in the, in the community, I want to make sure that we have perfect opportunity for everybody to comment. This is crucial.
Yeah. And it's not only crucial for them, but it is for us and for the council as well.
So we're looking at mid to late September at the earliest?
I was thinking the week of the 18th of September.
Okay.
Somewhere in there.
That whole week?
Yeah.
What about the Saturday?
The Saturday I can make.
Okay. Because, I mean, if we really get stuck, we might have to do Saturday and then a Saturday because of sports and.
Or Saturday and then whatever the following.
Wednesday, the next Wednesday or Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah. And that way there's one weekend day and one weeknight.
That's what I was saying.
Gives people more options.
Okay, so what I'll do is then I will try to reach out to see which venue's available. You're saying on the 23rd, starting on the 23rd, or is it the actual?
Yeah, the 23rd.
Is the 16th, the weekend of the 16th potentially even? Because that still gives me adequate time, I think, to be able to get the advertisements.
Isn't that Oktoberfest?
I don't know. When's Oktoberfest?
Don't have all this on my calendar. I defer to Barney, Barney G.
Tim, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, I don't think we'd do that. Unless we hold it there.
Tim Marshall Ball, county resident, or town resident, 312 Spring Gate. Just a quick question, are we talking about two days, one day specifically for a developer to do a presentation, and then a second day for feedback from that presentation? That's what I heard initially. I would highly disagree with that, yes.
They should be identical.
I would not expect an average citizen who is what this public hearing is for, the public, to have to come to two separate days, one just to hear a developer talk, but not be able to give input. So to expect, if you're going to do two days, I would recommend to have them identical to where everybody can give input on one of those days. To expect the average citizen to come for two separate days, I think, is a little overreaching with everybody's schedule.
Yeah, I thought we were going to have comment both days.
Yeah, I think it should be at the max, maybe 30 minutes.
So with both dates, you can maximize the number of people who could make a comment?
Yeah, I think at the charrette, we let the developer do most of the speaking, and then we answer the questions that they had. We did not have the opportunity to ask our questions. This, for this public hearing, this is our turn.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, to ask our questions over them. So it's up to us not to listen to them speak, but for us to speak and get the answers that we want answers to. So I don't need to sit through another, and I don't know if any citizens need to sit through yet another presentation, we want to know the answers to the questions that we have.
Right.
So that would be my recommendation, is to have them identical days and let us ask the questions that we want to ask. Thank you.
Councilmember Unger?
No problem, I'm just, for, excuse me, Carl Munder, town resident. For scheduling Oktoberfest, I believe is the 23rd, Saturday the 23rd. So I would say for scheduling and to give more time for John to find the right places, new earlier than the 30th, probably, earlier, and then somewhere around there. But Oktoberfest is the 20, 23rd.
Thank you.
All right, so the 30th is a Saturday, I guess. So you could pick a weeknight, the week before the 30th, and then Saturday.
Or after that.
Or after that, whichever, that timeframe.
Well, again, whichever venue's available, right? So that might dictate, it might be, it might be the 27th.
Right, exactly, depending on what's available, yeah.
But I'll look into that starting tomorrow and see if I can secure a location that we can leave the item set up hopefully between that. And again, it might not be able to be on a Saturday at the Legion because they might do bingo. I don't know when their bingo night is, or, you know, I'm not sure, but we'll.
And, and just to be sure we're all on the same page, and I'm kind of addressing this to the developer. So if the contours of both days start with a presentation of some, of some material, either the delta from what you saw first and what we have now, or elaborations on what we have now, to be followed by Q and A, that is, that's what we're crafting here. And again, the goal is everybody walks out with clarity as to what is presented in the revised plan. Is that fair? Okay, thank you.
They're not only clear on it, but they have the opportunity to give feedback.
Okay. All right, John, is that sufficient guidance?
I think so.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
And I'll let the developer know as soon as I know a date and a venue, I'll let you know as soon as I know.
Excellent, excellent. Okay. Ready for Delta Home Group?
Looked like you, that picture.
No, I'm actually a little taller than that guy.
So again, this is being brought back in front of you because Dan is looking to do a sign. He came in previously, it was a projected image sign, which doesn't comply with code. He resubmitted with a monochrome sign that's LED backlit. The message wouldn't be changing, maybe every, you were even saying a week for whatever event's happening. It is a double-sided sign. The size, the size is being submitted would meet the required, or it would meet the maximum square footage allowed on the parcel. It is actually about the same size as the current sign, but more of a monument style than a pylon sign that's existing. And it is a different location than the previous sign, I'll bring that up as well.
Okay.
And you guys looked at this previously, and it's a little small, I do apologize. But the original sign is up here, towards the north of the property, and this is located down on the corner here. It won't obstruct any type of site distance on either location. It'll be 20 foot off of the property line to the closest point of the sign, which would be in compliance with the code. And I'll bring up the plat as well, just so it might be easier to see.
John, do you have a current picture of what the current sign looks like?
It's black.
It's painted over black.
It's been painted over, it's just black. So it's really tough to see here, but it is right here, it's 20 foot off of the property line.
Yeah.
It's basically a box, a box-style sign that's lit inside, and it's a big square.
Okay. Yeah, the issue with the current location is that since it was first erected, there are trees that have been planted on an adjacent property that I don't have control over, which blocks a good portion of the sign. And two, with the traffic pattern changing, more vehicles are directed up Ridgeway Drive from Chick-fil-A and other businesses from there. So you don't exactly see what our business is, the signage, until after you've passed the building and the parking lot. So that's why we're trying to move it a little bit further south on the property. Here's the, I have a picture of the current sign, what it looks like.
Before it was painted black.
Yeah, when they moved down, they just painted over black.
Yeah.
It's still there. Sure.
And again, staff is recommending the approval of the size and the proposed new sign location shown on the map. And again, I'm pretty sure that this can be administratively, by the zoning administrator, I could approve it, but I just want to bring it back because I brought it to you previously.
Thank you. All right.
Just a quick question, you're removing the old one?
Yes, sir. We, the plans are, if it's allowed, is to put a flagpole there. Use the space, electric there, the light, so.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
John, I, and I believe in our last discussion on the first application, there was an issue with relooking the curb setback per the code. And so I believe we're assured that it's within that required setback.
You understand it was the 20 feet, it was half the distance, which was 40, and then it was 20, and we measured it out, and it would set 20 feet.
Correct, half the distance from the required zone, building setback, it has to set within that distance, right?
Yes, sir.
So we're good there. Gotcha.
No closer to that.
Away from the street, yeah.
Yeah, it's very similar, really.
And this conforms also with the sign ordinance with respect to height?
Well, the height, yeah, I mean, this is approximately the same size. And again, planning commission could make that final ruling, but I think the current sign is, I think, at 16.9. But it's also on a higher elevation on the property. This will be lower. So I think the 17 foot is fair.
It is. Yeah, the code reads that it cannot exceed 25 feet from the average roadbed frontage of your building. And so we've got eight-foot scotch room there, so it's within that. I did have a couple of quick questions, and I think we explored this in the first application too. Is it fair to say that the very top portion is what's referred to as a lighted box? And let me read the definition of lighted box from our own code. A sign with a lighting device behind written text or messaging on an opaque or transparent surface designed to illuminate from behind the text or messaging. So I think it's fair to say.
That's correct.
Part of this is a lighted box. Another part of it, lower on the proposed sign, I believe also is what's referred to in our code as a projected image sign. Projected image sign, a type of sign that is a form of electronic display that projects images onto a screen or other flat surface, including LCD and plasma displays. Kind of shows the age of our code when we talk about LCD and plasma. But nonetheless, it's trying to convey kind of an electronic image.
Yes, it's a LED sign that would be very similar to gas stations' lettering that they're using. It'd be.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And, and I preface with those two definitions as to is that what we're looking at? Because in the code, it also states in 112-11 that prohibited signs and devices include lighted box signs and projected image signs. And, and so I'm referring to the code, which is our guidelines here as to making judgments on this. However, there may be a bright side. I know that lighted box signs exist in that commercial area. I can speak to a fast food restaurant right next door to you up on the hill. And so the code reads prohibited signs and devices unless expressly permitted elsewhere, those types of signs are permitted. So I turned to the town attorney saying, is that enough? I don't want to use the word wiggle room. But without asking for, I, I want us to abide by the code, but at the same time, I fully understand this second application and the precedence that we already have within the town. Is it fair to say that this would meet the unless permitted elsewhere?
Yeah, in my opinion, it would. And going back to when the sign ordinance was originally crafted, I believe that was exactly the intent of that language. That is to say, the general rule is prohibited, but if it's permitted.
Elsewhere.
Various parts of the text, which, if I recall correctly, break down by district, then it's permitted.
I'm in line with that.
Excellent. Excellent, okay. All right. Any other comments on this application?
No.
Just give me a recommendation to approve or not approve.
Anyone want to make a motion? On the revised sign design by Delta Home Group? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the sign of the, the size of the proposed new sign at the location shown on the map as set forth in the staff report.
I'll second.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the revised sign design. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? All right, and it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Warmall Companies. John, do we have a map that we can project?
Yeah, one second. They also have a presentation as well, but initially we'll show you the first map here. Again, this, this was presented to us back in, I think it was February 15th, and the parcel had a lot of items that I couldn't handle at my level. I reached out to our town attorney for some guidance. Initially, it came in for a board of appeals request for a bunch of variances. That didn't move forward based upon town attorney's perception and guidance. So then the applicant resubmitted the plan for a pre-app for Carroll County. Once we went through the pre-app, I was trying to figure out how we were going to process this and move the plan forward, and sort of came to a stumbling, stumbling block. So that's why I'm bringing it to you to sort of get more guidance on how we can best move this plan forward. There's a lot of pieces to the puzzle that don't really fit in our normal code and guidelines. So I'm just looking for guidance from you. And again, maybe their presentation will enlighten everybody's eyes, but I want to leave it up to you to sort of give me some more guidance to move forward.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Mike Wiley with the Warmall Companies. We are the contract purchasers of the MH Realty property between Prospect Road and Hill Street. And with me tonight is Ed Warmall, principal with the Warmall Companies, and our consultant, Ron Thompson with Van Mar Associates. Little background, we, we met probably six, seven months ago with John and Barney to discuss launching this project, and we've since had more dialogue between staff. And we believe that we have a way forward for redevelopment of this property to bring something nice to the town. And so we'd like to touch on a few of our development elements for the project and also talk a little bit about our understanding of the town code as means on how we think the planning commission could allow us to move forward. Because we're very anxious to obtain the entitlements and move forward with getting the development going on the property and also provide an asset to the town. So with that, we have a PowerPoint presentation tonight, and Ed will start off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So what I wanted to do is put myself in your shoes and consider what your thoughts are and your concerns are. And in this presentation, I just wanted to get oriented as to, as to what we're talking about. So this property, as you can see on this slide, is almost immediately behind us right now. It's, it's not far from the town hall here. And I'm sure you're well familiar with it. I mean, right now, it's, it's, it's just a big concrete slab that's taking up a lot of, a lot of space right in your backyard. So let's go to the next slide.
Where does the Frederick? Where, where does the Frederick, uh, Carroll County line cross that property?
Yeah, so, Bill, it sort of comes down across, I'd say, seven eighths of the property is in Frederick County. Majority of the houses will be in Frederick County.
Okay, majority would be in Frederick.
Well, yeah, all. The way we designed it, we, we just put, put them all in Frederick County to avoid that can, that concern. By the way, I applaud you for being able to manage a town in four counties. That's, that's an amazing feat. But, um, so what this one does is it shows that what we want to do is complete a, a large section of the, the, the BNO rails, the trails, um, segment, you know, coming right down to the caboose that's just, just a block down the street here. And so it's a significant connection that this would enable to occur, you know, and we would take responsibility, you know, for building that. And, um, so it goes right by the concrete slab and, which isn't very beautiful right now. So if you have a trail park system, I would think you'd want it to be, you know, a beautiful place for people to, to enjoy themselves and to experience the town. So with that, um, let's go to the next slide, please. So this is what it currently looks like. This is from Hill Street. And so you drive down that, that road and you just see this, this site, right? I mean, it's not something you want to put on the front page of the local newspaper. So let's go to the next, next one. You can see, you know, it's paved, you've got, uh, high school kids doing donuts in the, in the parking lot right there. You can see them all over the pavement on the slide. And, um, and then if you go to the next slide, you look a little closer and, you know, there's, there's, there's levels of concrete and hidden spaces underneath. And so this isn't really a good thing to have in the town. So let's go to the next one. This is a view of the concrete slab from another part of Hill Street, near Baker Street, I believe it is. And you can see coming up here, passing the houses, some houses, you know, this is their view every day. So, um, so as we look for properties, we look for ones that we think there would be a public will to improve. And so, you know, we're thinking that this of all properties, you know, should, uh, should be worthy of, of improvement. So the next one. So I just said it was a wasteland, I thought you might resonate with that. But this is what, you know, could, you know, we could put in that location. We're, we're use, we're using the section of the code that's Section 112-37.1B. And what that does is it, it allows for single-family attached homes to be built, uh, under a site plan approval. And, um, this might not be the, the architecture, maybe we would pick some architecture that's, um, you know, more sensitive to, to the town architecture. We tend to change the architecture in each community we go to. If you haven't looked at, become familiar with our company, I encourage you to do so. It's wormall.com. And you can see that we create, uh, uni- unique architecture in each one of our communities. We won the best townhouse in, of, of the year in, about two years ago, for the whole nation. It was a Quarry Springs project in Potomac, Maryland. So, uh, we build, you know, nice architecturally distinctive housing. We're the developer and the home builder. And so, um, we, we, we were anticipating this would be an age-restricted community, so these homes would have elevators in them. So, uh, next one. Just a closer up view. If you want to see these in person, this is actually in West Winds, uh, the West Winds portion of the Lake Linganor community. And that's where, where we built these. We're looking at a product where you can drive in the front, um, 22 feet wide. So, single-family attached homes. So let's go to the next slide, please. This is what the insides look like. So, nice architectural appeal. You know, what we're, what we're seeing is, you know, these people could be living next to the downtown here. They could be visiting, you know, servicing these restaurants on a weekly basis and, and eating out and bringing more customers to the retail that's in the, in the core of the town. And, um, you know, that's something I'm sure these retailers would really appreciate, especially since they're seniors. Seniors tend to like to eat out a lot. The next one. So the project description, it would be age-restricted. We thought maybe the cold storage property shouldn't be the final name. Then we, we, we came, we did a little survey and, and looked at the historic names in the area and came up with the idea of calling it Mill Ridge. And then we're, by the way, uh, we like the word mill because we're the developers of the Warman's Mill Community in Frederick, Maryland. If you're familiar with that, uh, that's sort of our, one of our prime projects that we did. The way it's designed, it would be 48 senior, single-family homes, attached homes. It would be, there would be a homeowners association that would take care of all the grounds. So it would always be kept in good, uh, good shape. You know, as the bikers are, and hikers and walkers are, are walking down the path. And so they'd have a nice community to look at. You know, I mentioned the rails-to-trails, uh, connection, so that would be an important part of it. And then the rails and tr- to trails would be built and then turned over to the town to own as part of their rail system. So that's that one. Next slide, please. So what you see here is you see first the rail connection, um, from the BNO, uh, caboose there, all the way through to Hill Street. And, um, so that connects, in order to make that connection, it's, it, it necks the site down between the, the square on the, on the lower side with a couple of houses in it, and then the trail itself. And so, so we have this, this narrow slot to work the homes into, which is a unique circumstance that we're trying to design around. The reason we submitted what we did with some variances is because that's what we believe is the simplest way to, to get this approved under the zoning ordinance, un- under the town code. You know, so we used Section 112, what, 30, I forget, 37.1B, um, because of that, because it can be a site plan for all the, all the units, one site plan. So one thing to note is that, um, on Prospect, there's currently a lot of trees, and those would be retained. So the view from Prospect would be, you know, similar to the way it is. And the same with, uh, on Hill Street where the cul-de-sac is. You know, there would be a lot of landscaping there, so, so it would be more heavily screened than it is today. So the view sheds from the streets would basically be the same, except for the one where you see it from Hill Street and just see the, the, the concrete. So instead of looking at the, you know, the, the historic concrete, you'd see, you know, a nice community in which people are enjoying themselves. So the next slide.
What's the amount of acreage in this project?
Do you recall?
We are about 7.8 acres, we changed.
So I think with that, um, at the end of the day, you know, as a planning commission, you have the power to approve projects. And we believe this project makes a lot of sense. We believe it's a betterment for the town. We believe it has a lot of positive aspects that would, would be desired. And, um, with that, you know, I'll pass it over to Ron, and he can get into the technical details. But I just thought it's really important to put things in perspective, and I think this is an opportunity. If we can't do something like this, then we just need to leave the project. Thank you.
I think this is the point where I probably throw up my hands in the technical part of it, because many of you have been on the town council where we have struggled in previous proposals of how to develop a piece of property within the downtown zone that doesn't fit the definition of the downtown zone, along Main Street, along Center Street. And as a result, it creates that so-called hardship, for lack of a better word, of how to develop it that, um, meets what the town is looking for and is aesthetically pleasing. Past proposals have been heavy development where what the Wormall Companies are proposing is just 48, um, townhome-type units, um, on the property. It's a redevelopment site. So it will not be inexpensive to do, as you are probably aware with what the town had to spend either in grants or their own money for the rails-to-trail to the west in remediating that part of the project.
Ron, let me ask you a question. Well, you're, you're familiar with the amount of time you've spent with various projects and so forth. Open space is a significant concern that we have for any development, given where we are in terms of a deficit of, of open space and is a requirement for any new development going forward. Any comments that, that you wish to make in that regard versus on this project?
The plan that we presented to you actually would meet the requirements for open space in, um, 3 acres per 100 people. Again, it's 2 people per unit, but it would. And in addition, there's the added benefit, which, quite frankly, I believe should be counted as additional open space by giving you the, the rails-to-trail path that you normally wouldn't have there. But nevertheless, not doing that, we do meet that requirement for it. Now, the difference, because it is a site plan, is that we're proposing it to be as a site plan where the units are not individual lots and we're, we're bounded by, well, 3 streets on the property. So we're using as a difference a private way or alleyway for all of these homes to be, townhomes to be accessed, type units to be accessed from. The garages would not be facing the main street, they'd be facing internally, coming off of the, the private street. So as John pointed out, there are some difficult, it doesn't fit the standard donut hole for, um, downtown zone, nor does it fit the standard donut hole for townhomes. And what we're saying is, is that this really with the proper variations or variances could be a very attractive project for the town. We're not proposing lot lines for the townhomes. We're not proposing a public street that they front on a public street. Their access is a public street, but the internal street that you saw would be an alleyway. We're posing walkways around. You saw the design that Wormall Company does where there's a double car garage. Underneath, people are able to drive in, get out, get into an elevator and access their unit on the second and third floors. There are no residential units above it. It's a single, standing, townhouse-type unit attached.
Mr. Chair, I have some questions.
Hello. I think that this is a definitely good place to do development, real infill. And we made a mistake years ago not, um, doing that project, but it was more units, that's true. My questions are more related to what, what it's going to actually be like. So is there going to be any accessibility for people with disabilities or for, it's, you say at this point it's an elderly complex. At least the pictures you showed there all had stairs on the outside. Oh, but you're saying that they can drive in. But anyway, can you talk?
So there would be, there would, since it would be a senior product, we, you know, would offer elevators from the, the garage level, you know, up to each floor. I do acknowledge that there's stairs on the front. It's, it's hard, I mean, we don't have to have those stairs on the front, but it makes for a very narrow entrance next to a two-car garage. And it, it just lives better when, when people can walk up to your primary living space and people enter your home. And it's, you, you get this, you know, better experience when people can come to your real front door.
So if somebody, um, who lived there used a wheelchair, would they be able to access the garage and in the elevator and actually fit into, you know, like one or two of these? I'm not saying they all had to have to, well, actually, under the Fair Housing Act, I think they all now have to have certain.
Have to be ADA accessible.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the plan.
Yeah. So someone would be able to access and live there. And what are these, three bedrooms, two bedrooms?
Uh, those are typically three bedrooms. They can have a fourth, I believe.
And so what's the idea in terms of the, the price point? Like, who's going to be able to afford to live in these townhouses?
We build them and we make a small profit compared percentage-wise. So we, we provide as affordable housing as possible. So that's something that the market controls, not us.
And my last question, I think, is why did you decide to make this all senior housing?
Because the schools don't have capacity.
That's certainly getting around. I think we're going to be Leisure World, Leisure World Mount Airy, from what, from what I've been seeing lately.
But also, I mean, it, you know, we, we wouldn't build something we didn't think would sell, right? So we believe there is a market. You know, people who are seniors, you know, would really enjoy, you know, the downtown.
So you think seniors, rather than like people in their late twenties, early thirties, would want to live this close to downtown and walk to the, the pub and, and stuff?
Absolutely.
You think so? Okay. You have your, you have your, what is it called? The marketing analysis on that? What do you think, Jim? All right, thank you.
Are you, are you saying people don't like to come downtown and shop and eat?
Oh, I'm, I'm just wondering if, you know, because there might be noise from the, the pub at night and, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering if, you know.
No, I mean, when, when, the studies show that when you're closer to retail, it increases property values by about 20%.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the age group. I, I agree that, that that's a good place for some people.
So at, at Warman's Mill, we recreated a little small town in the middle. And everything around the town is age-restricted. And so they're hearing the music from the gazebo bands that are playing and the people that are doing dance lessons out there and people who are, um, the music that was being played at the, the restaurant, you know. So, so we have experience with, you know, 171 units immediately adjacent to retail.
Oh, sorry, one more question. So, um, will it be very easy, like, to get out of there and walk downtown? I'm trying to envision, I guess, so the trail would go where the caboose is, right?
John, you want to go back one slide?
I'm sorry, I probably could look at the map. You can show me on the map.
Yeah, the, the trail would follow what would have been the original tracks. The trail would follow what would, would have been the original tracks, which would dead-end, dead-end right into the parking lot where the caboose is.
Okay. Yeah, so it would be like
100 yards?
Yeah, okay.
It's really close.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr.
Well, we had a comment from this gentleman.
Hi, Sean Kelly. I'm here as a town resident. I live in the Spring Gate, uh, community. A couple of questions to pick up on a couple of things that Commissioner Dickinson was asking. If those houses that you're planning were on the market today, what would, what would the ballpark price range be?
So, I know I'm supposed to answer the question, but is there a reason that's important to you?
I would, to give everybody scope of the development and the plans and, um... To give everybody scope of the development and the plans and, again, tack on to one of the comments that, I don't know, they're kind of odd-looking senior housing units. So we're kind of wondering, again, who's, who is that target customer and what is, what is the price point?
They would probably, it's amazing how pricing has changed in the last three years. I mean, the market really has inflated. You know, it's, it's amazing how much things cost to build now, and, you know, we're hoping there's going to be more stabilization of those costs, you know, and the inflation that we're all experiencing. But in today's, in today's market, if these were selling, they're probably, they're probably in the $600,000 range, maybe $700,000.
Okay.
They're pretty, you know, they're not entry-level townhouses.
Thank you for that answer. I guess while I'm up here, you know, and this, again, this is related to another comment, it's what I've been thinking before I saw those renderings and looking at this sketch before the, before this meeting, this is just a comment from me as a citizen. Like most of the plans we see at the first pre-concept, it's just trying to squeeze every square inch possible getting, and this is even going to the point of asking for a laundry list of variances. So, you know, again, just kind of wondering, is this the right project for that? I think we all want to see it developed. We all want to see something there. But again, with the renderings and with this, you know, bird's-eye-view 2D sketch, I'm, again, wondering as a citizen, is this the right project for that, for that space? So that's what I think we're all trying to figure out. Thanks.
May I comment on that? So we see this as an opportunity for the town. We have the property under contract, and there's only, there's only so much we can do to make the site work. And so, you know, so as far as the density, I mean, density is supposed to be next to the core of a town, and that's, that's where it's supposed to be, you know? So if we treat this like just a few single-family homes, you know, you're missing a perfect opportunity to get the customers to the core of your downtown and make it thrive further. So, thank you.
All right. Carl?
Mr. Chair, I'll speak once, I just want to get in line and put my name there. I do have comments, but if you all want to speak and discuss first, and then I'll go after all the citizens have spoken, but I just want to make sure that I get in line and name instead of the starting and stopping of your all discussions.
Is there any other presentation that y'all want to make with regard to the project?
No, I think we just, you know, request, request that guidance be given to, to the planner and the attorney as to how to proceed, and, and I think maybe that's going to be something that takes place, you know, after this meeting. But thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So with the townhouses, I'm sorry, I don't know any seniors that are going to want a three-story townhouse, even with an elevator, that's ADA accessible. Two, we do need more, we need to have more either single-family homes or townhouses for our younger demographics as well. With $600,000, a senior on a fixed income is not going to be able to afford that. I can tell you that right now. So I think that's a far reach at this point. It's still dense. Again, like Sean was saying, we, we would like to see this develop, but I'm also concerned about water, sewer, how we're getting that. We're already in a deficit of open space and water, so I would like to understand that more.
Kim, you might share your background and your ability to, to assess and, and know this marketplace.
Yeah, I mean, the, right now, this market cannot hold $600,000 for...
Tell me why you know that.
Oh, so I'm, I'm in the apartment industry. I've been doing this for 27 years, so I understand ADA compliance, senior living. I do senior living as well, so I understand this market and the outside markets, and this is, I don't see how this would work. Some years ago, when they were first talking about this other project, it was before I was on this commission, but they were talking about what cold storage left behind, and there was talk about having to dig down, and there was some insulation. Can you talk about that?
I think, I think from the study, of course, it was cold storage. It was a facility where things came in on the rail, offloaded onto trucks. Trucks came out through the downtown, refrigerated trucks, semis, whatever, delivery dispersed. So with the concrete bed as raised, I'm sure there's insulation underneath it.
Do you know what kind, like?
I don't know. I think there may have been some testing done, Phase One-type testing. Obviously, the town has had to struggle with the rail tracks, and I assume the same condition that they had on the west side would occur where the tracks were on the other. In terms of that spreading throughout the site, the site's almost all impervious, so you wouldn't have that occurring underneath pavement and so forth. But where that occurred was where you had gravel along the tracks, skillage and so forth. But in any event, those are the type of issues that would have to be dealt with in any development scenario. And again, that's one of the issues of having a project that you can build and how you cost it out.
Ralph?
Mr. Chairman, just as a quick, very quick background on this, and correct me if I'm wrong, this parcel initially began as both commercial-zoned and industrial-zoned. A small sliver, roughly an acre of the seven, that was kind of where the caboose is, closer to Main Street. And then the remaining parcel toward Hill Street being zoned industrial. And then in the 2013 master plan, the recommendations were for that parcel to be rezoned completely into what it is now, downtown zone, which I believe, I wasn't a part of that effort, but I believe the good intent was that parcel, some small connection to Main Street that we've seen on your diagram, would continue to be used in order to enhance the small-town charm of the downtown zone district.
That's it.
Correct?
That's exactly what was the intent.
And in that intent, it would, whatever would be developed in the parcel, it would reflect both residential and commercial offerings, because that's what our downtown is. It's, it's a mix of, of those two. And so at the outset, I go into that because there is no commercial here. Fair enough, right? My second point is that I believe there's an ask of the commission to consider seven variances. And variances, and I defer to our town attorney, are actions by this commission with regard to modifications of dimensions, bulk. It gives a clear list of those things which we may consider to be in the context of variances.
Variances.
And so, yeah, I think that's where I'm going to. And so I, I can't see the seven areas that you label as variances, variances as we defined under the authority of the commission to, to render against this application. And the last point I make is the zoning of this that you referred to does require, if it is a mix, that the first floor of those proposed buildings be commercial with a residential part on top.
And I'll respond that you just hit the nail on the head of hardship, because it was originally envisioned to blast a road from the caboose all the way through to Hill Street, making that a bypass. That was never going to happen. Without that, putting commercial isolated from any street view makes it nonfeasible. So by taking it into the downtown zone, there was always an expectation of being able to be reasonably developed, but when you start adding on the restrictions, it creates that hardship of what is not able to be accomplished. You can't do, unless you make it just a big entertainment zone back there, pubs and everything that draws people, that they just come out and make a lot of noise, it can't be developed as first-floor commercial, because commercial relies upon drive-through, walk-by, street traffic. That doesn't occur on it. So we, I, we looked at this, yeah, there are some variances, but there are also, as the town attorney appointed out, there are some variations that also, because of the subdivision code, that could be applied. I think we're here today to try to figure out whether or not the planning commission wants to get behind what's being proposed to do or just saying, we don't think so, or we don't know. That's where we are, quite frankly, with it.
And I would agree. It's, it's a bit of a complex and it's conundrum, because we moved for this entire parcel to be under the DTZ zoning with its requirements, and yet, and I'm being objective here, it's, it's, it's a high mark to me, I think, of those requirements. So it's, it's a tough question on this application, I'll be frank with you.
John, could you advance to another slide? So keep, keep going. So this one, see, the code says that you could have apartments, condominiums, loft units, or single-family attached homes, and the single-family attached homes is the one that does not say that you need first-floor commercial use. The other three say you need first-floor commercial use, but for that one in particular, it doesn't say you need it. You just need to have, you know, the garage on that level. So, so we thought that there was a, you know, presupposition that that was a possible thing to do in the DC, DTZ zone.
All right, so I have a question, I think, for Tom. So at the end of the staff report, the second to last paragraph says, "Any request that the first floor be other than commercial cannot be approved except by means of a text amendment ultimately approved by the town council." Now, is that accurate or is this accurate? Are they both somehow accurate?
So the problem here is what's being proposed, yeah, they look like townhomes, but what's being proposed are no lot lines between, starts to sound a bit condominium-ish to me.
Oh, okay.
I haven't looked at, you know, the technical difference between a town home and a condominium. I would suspect and do believe that one of the primary features that condominiums do not have lot lines between the units. Now, I haven't looked at that in depth, so one of the first questions is, is this really a series of single-family homes when it doesn't propose individual lots or, you know, even townhomes are lots, right? So that's the first question. So I would agree, if these are single-family homes, and if that's what's being proposed, then you don't have to have commercial on the first floor. What I was, what that staff report's getting at is, I'm not so sure, as it's currently proposed, that these are townhomes.
Right, okay. So, so part of the question is, do they request a text amendment from the town council? Or does someone find out whether these are condominiums or single-family attached homes? Or does both happen on parallel tracks or?
So a couple of things. First of all, I keep hearing variances. I like to stay away from that term.
Right.
Okay. There are limitations or restrictions imposed on any development from essentially two sources under the town code. One is Chapter 112. That's the zoning code, okay? There are two entities who can change zoning requirements. One, of course, is the town council.
Right.
Right? And the town council can do that by passing legislation, sometimes on application for a text amendment. In fact, that did occur in one instance that I'm aware of with respect to this property several years ago that you all may recall, okay? There are also dimensional or measurement requirements in Chapter 112. Those can be the subject of a variance, if granted upon a proper showing, by only the Board of Appeals, okay? The second source of limitation is Chapter 98, which I'll, for, it's the subdivision site plan, but I'll call it the planning chapter, right? That is under your auspices. So if there is a limitation that is imposed on this development merely or only by virtue of Chapter 98, upon a showing of hardship, this body has the ability to grant what the case law calls a subdivision regulation variation, not to be confused with a variance, okay? It's upon a showing of hardship.
I agree.
So that's how that all breaks out. In looking at these variance requests, none of them seem to me to be dimensional. Some of them seem to me, though I'm not given indication of what section exactly of the code's being asked to be changed or modified, but some of them seem to be Chapter 98 requirements or limitations, which upon showing of hardship, this body could grant. The last thing I'll say, though, is remember, the other way that a development can escape restrictions is to be rezoned.
Oh, Steve's...
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead. Okay. Couple of questions real quick. The parking situation, you, two-car garage, correct?
Yes.
Visitor parking? Maintenance parking?
Could you go back to the image? Yeah, so, you know, it's the two-car garages for the homes. You know, many, many areas where we work, two cars per unit is what's, what's required. And so, you know, there's, there's an opportunity to, I mean, I, I agree with you, probably there needed to be a few extra spaces for, you know, for guests and, and dropping off of things and that type of thing.
Well, there are four bedrooms.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea. Well, no, two is plenty for a townhome community.
Yeah.
I mean, we do somewhere with even fewer.
Well, there's usually some off-street parking on a lot of times.
I tell you, nowadays, people are living in vertical homes nowadays. I mean, it's, with the scarcity of land and opportunities, people, people are, are living in past houses.
The rear of the houses, the features that you have there, what are they supposed to be?
The white rectangle is, is outdoor deck.
Okay. And then you had, on the northern part of the property, you had two open spaces, kind of right on top of those little row of three. What exactly did you have in mind for that?
What would be in the green spaces? It's either forest, it's probably mostly forest conservation in the, in those locations on the north side, given... the north side, given Prospect Street.
Okay. And the row of three, their access to the trail, it looks like a hill, but how do they get to the trail?
They would probably have to go downstairs or something.
Okay.
It is steep.
And every unit that you would be planning on building would have an elevator? It wouldn't be optional?
Given that it's senior housing, now, 55 and older, I'm 60, I don't need an elevator. So I think it would most likely be optional.
Okay. Yeah. And I think I'm definitely in agreement that, I mean, they keep saying, "single-family attached." I mean, could you define your definition of a single-family attached versus a townhouse or row house?
So, so one thing I think that's causing confusion is, is we talk about whether something's for sale or for rent, but normally, you know, planning commissions don't care how something's owned, you know? And you use the word condominium in there to mean something very, very specific. It's somebody living above shops, you know, that's what you define as a condominium. You know, it's not a term of ownership because planning commissions normally don't care how things are owned, you know? So the easiest way to think of this is as rental, you know, if they were rental towns, it'd be, oh, of course, it's just, it's just one site, you know? So I got lost, I didn't think I answered your question.
Yeah, I didn't ask if they were owned or rented. I asked what your definition of a single-family attached is versus a townhouse versus a row home.
So your ordinance has those two terms. It has single-family attached under the 11237-1B.
Yeah.
And that means something different than a townhouse, which is in Section 98, I believe it is, 60. And so, we were, we were providing, you know, the way that your ordinance enables this type of project. And so that's what we submitted.
So what's your definition?
An attached home is homes that are side by side and they're attached.
I'm going to say condos would mean that you've got living units above you, multiple stacked living units above you. That, to me, is a condo type of project.
Not necessarily.
So, Ron, can you just maybe, because I haven't really figured this out based on Tom's answer, so can you explain how we can do this under Chapter 98 and everything works? Are you able to do that?
I think under Chap.
Under Chapter 98, from the planning commission, you're allowed to give a variation on items B through, what is it?
G has a, after 112 issue with that, too, right?
But from the planning commission, B is not an issue because of density. Lot size, we're saying that as a site plan, we have zero lot size there. We have frontage around the property that we're maintaining, but it is a complete site there. Street frontage, we're bounded by three streets, but our internal variation would be that the internal street would be an alleyway privately maintained by the HOA. And with that, the garages would be to the alleyway on it. Same kind, I mean, I'm just answering Leslie's question there. Buffer, we're meeting that requirement because we'll be 50-foot off of the, the unit would be 50-foot off of a property line where it butts residential property. So there's no variation there. Our parking, we have driveways with the, plus garages, so we have at least four spaces per unit.
My question is, really, for the rest of the commission is, can we move forward on this with the way it's zoned now with this property? I feel that these are condos. They don't have lot lines. You don't have to be stacked to have a condo. You can be right next to each other, be a condo. Not that it's necessarily a bad thing, or it's a good thing, but I don't know if we can actually approve it with the zoning it is because of the way it's written. Now, if there's a change or something that can happen, or we can come back to this and move it to a different meaning, I just don't think we are able to go forward with it at this time.
So, Tom, you started to say that when Ron was talking about Chapter 98, that they still have a Chapter 112 problem?
And I fell on B, the second one. I think there's a prohibition in Chapter 112.
112, wait, tell me exactly where you are.
All right. Let me pull up. 11237 dot 1B? No, they're very, variance, quote-unquote, item number two of B.
Where are you, in Chapter 98 or 112?
No.
Oh, there's.
On their request.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Creation number two.
Okay.
Okay. Parking and garage front.
And that is not in the staff report, that item?
Not in that.
I don't think that's.
Oh, it's not? Okay. So I might be referring to the earlier letter.
Oh, Tom's, oh, Ron's letter.
If you look at 112 dash 37, 1B, 5C.
112 dash 37, 1B dash, hold on, 1B, that is not.
Parking garages to be in the rear, okay? Now, if in fact, this is a, quote, "single-family home," unquote, and not a.
Condo.
You put the cell back up with the code section.
All right, one second. 11237 point 1D?
So this is from Chapter 112.
1.
37 point 1, okay? If in fact, these are single-family attached homes, the zoning code says with parking or garage area in the rear of the property. They're asking that the parking be in the front of the property.
Oh, I thought you said the parking was in the rear. It's not?
No, it's in the front.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So with that one, there may be a 112 problem.
Okay.
Only to be cured.
Yeah, some, I was thinking the parking was in the back. Can the parking be in the back?
If you don't want a rails-to-trail connection, we probably could make it work.
Mr. Chair, to kind of continue pulling that thread, if we go by delta there, single-family attached homes, is it fair to say then we shift to 9860 on townhomes to then guide the design of that option? Is that fair?
I would agree, and to an earlier point, the single-family attached home, I wouldn't say is necessarily different than townhomes. It's a broader term, might include duplexes.
Sure.
Right.
Right.
But townhomes, I think, are a type of single-family attached home.
And staying with that, so if we go to 9860 to inform us of what is being asked of here, we see right away that it doesn't conform to 9860's requirements with regard to setbacks, street frontage, a list of things that are then encompassing 9860's requirements.
True, but then one of the subsections says that you can vary that upon a showing of, I'm paraphrasing, hardship.
Correct. And so that says, "The planning commission shall have the power to modify the requirements of those townhouse requirements upon finding of practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship, and that such modifications made by the planning commission will not substantially impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent properties." In other words, there's a collateral possibility of impact, et cetera, et cetera, to be considered, okay? So that's it, whole cloth, as to how that could be a part of downtown zone-allowed residential construction, and you're purely residential. So you're pointing to that. And we point to 9860 now to guide then the design, many elements of which can't be met. And then you say they can't be because you have the authority, planning commission, to see the hardship we would have to conform to them. So if I captured it?
Pretty much.
Okay. So then, I'm a simple guy. People have called me a dumb ranger. So if we don't do as you ask, and we don't conform to 9860, describe to me what is your perceived hardship? Is it less density and therefore, and I'm being objective here, less profit?
Yeah, it's the, you can give me a little side of it? So, the width of the site and the topography of the site is such that it's, you can't squeeze a public road in there and the townhouse will still have the trail. So we're trying to accommodate the trail, make it a good experience along the trail, and by doing that, then we have to, we have to cut through the narrow neck on the property.
So my.
Once you have the setbacks and everything else and the road and all, it crowds the houses that are there, and it just doesn't become practical.
My, yeah, my question is, so the topography on this lot and the rails-to-trails, you said that we had to have stairs there, correct? So that's not considered, I mean, for, if we're talking about 55 or better, there may not be seniors that can walk up a flight of stairs. So I don't see how this is going to work. On top of what Steve said, and I agree, there's no additional parking. I live in a townhouse community, and there are at least two to three extra parking in my vicinity of my townhouse. For guests, for people to come over, stay the night, whatever it is, to visit. So that does need to be incorporated in this site.
I have a question. Go ahead, sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We provide four, basically, their design would provide four off-street parking spaces for it. And, you know, with each unit, you've got two in a driveway, two in a garage. In addition, we've proposed an alley wider than what you normally would have, 26 feet, so that you could have, and you'll note that we do have places where the units are not directly across from each other to allow for parking of guests along the side of a street. That still leaves you with two-way traffic.
What about fire, ladder trucks, that kind of stuff, to get back there in the alley as well? So you need to think about that as well on top of the front. So if you're talking about a six-to-eight-row townhouse, you need access in the front and the back of the townhouse. And then that alleyway, if there's cars parked there, there's a fire or something, then that's, that's going to hinder the ability to put out that fire.
For the majority of them, they have the access, a fire truck could access or use the rail to trail. I mean, the amount of asphalt you put on there is significant, and the width of it is enough, almost like a single-lane roadway.
I don't think.
We've also provided, and there would be an emergency access out from that cul-de-sac to Baker Street, so that, those requirements would end up being met.
I have one more, I have one more question, which has to do with this, the senior housing. So for some reasons that have been mentioned, we're not so sure, some of us, about it being over 55. So is that like a deal breaker if it can't be elderly housing? Or is it like something, you know, what's the?
The only way it can be developed, because the properties are in Frederick County, is they must be senior housing. There is no school capacity available.
Like, like not for, you know, 20 kids? There's no school capacity?
I have one where I want to add, a project in Frederick County, just on the outside of Mount Airy, person wants to add it to lots. The answer's no. No school capacity. Because it's an add-on of a previous subdivision, therefore, it cannot move forward, cannot, a lot cannot be subdivided into two lots.
Yeah, Mike just had an idea on that one. You want to say that?
You know, one way the town can become big winners and help the residents that are looking for something for all-age market, adopt a change to your APFO approvals that allows a provision similar to what we enjoy in the city of Frederick, which is a pay-and-go provision when you're over 100% school capacity, but under, I believe the county upper limit is 120%. That would change the fabric of the project, where we could do a wider range of market-rate price points. Because even though in theory it would not pass the school's test, and I think we checked desktop at least two of the levels of the three levels, meaning elementary and middle school, that a pay-and-go provision would allow this to change to a market-rate project as opposed to an age-restricted. But, you know, frankly, our interest in it is.
Wouldn't that be controlled at the county level? Wouldn't that be controlled at the county level?
It is.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, the school's test is, but the county has the ability, if they amend their ordinance, to adopt a pay-and-go provision.
Right, but we're not the county, we're just a town. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, the town can adopt that in their ordinance to do a pay-and-go provision. The city of Frederick did it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. My name's Carl Munder, 2002, Philbrook Lane. I'm also sitting councilman for the town of Mount Airy. First off, I'll address the pay-go. No, we cannot do anything with schools since we're split between two counties. It's strictly a county-level problem. So if Frederick County has no capacity, they have no capacity, we can't do a dang thing about that. Same thing with Carroll County. So I will address my comments solely on the plan and the, not, to make our town attorney happy, exemptions, not variances. Make him happy here, because he's getting a little bit nervous, I see, over there when everybody mentions the V-word. Basically, I want to say, this plan should not be approved, it should be rejected and come back redrawn. The developer and the engineer is coming before this board with too many exceptions being requested for this plan. They're basically requesting all the exceptions that'll make this plan work as drawn. The plan itself needs to be reduced in the number of units. The buffer space alongs the homes, the rails-to-trails, needs to be increased. This can be done by reducing the number of units along there, because currently we have areas in town that the town itself has put trails in, and homes, you know, 200 feet away from the trail have requested the town to plant buffer trees. So with the patios up against the trail, we're going to be getting knocks on the town hall doors, wanting trees there. I can guarantee it on that. So that needs to be changed. As these are, in my view, not, as some people say condos, townhomes, these are, in my view, are townhomes, because they are a single-family attached. A lot of townhome communities, if you look around the neighborhood and the area, do have HOA-mowed yards and things of that nature. So this is not irrelevant or out of the ordinary, it's just that our town code does not address that, unfortunately. But if they are townhomes, they should be held to the standard of townhome developments, no matter what they are finally classified as, there's no more than five units per grouping. There are no townhomes within this town community where there are more than five units per grouping. So it needs to be developed. So it needs to be developed as current town code states that. As for the list of exceptions that are being requested, I believe the road in there, the town road, it needs to be a town and publicly maintained road access into the community itself. We have numerous examples in this town where townhomes are on private roads and HOAs cannot keep up with the maintenance of the road, or they request later the town takes over the road. I requested the same type of thing up at the Green Tree Development, that those roads need to be publicly maintained and publicly-owned road. Trash trucks and everything else is going to go down, down there, just saves the hassle from it being a hassle in the long run. Also, if I was reading the map right, the townhomes need to be adjusted a little bit farther to the west, because some of the patios do fall in the Carroll County line if the drawing is correct. So they need to be put all in Frederick County. Let me get back to the list of the exemptions, which should be right here. As I said, the roads there need to be public, that could guarantee removal of some of the homes. Five units will remove some of the homes. No more than five can make up the space for the extra parking there, too. The other things related to the parking garage front alleyway might be an exception. On it, the zero lot lines, also, it's at your discretion. As I said earlier, exemption number four should be removed and held to the current town standard of five. The common areas, I'm not sure if that can be exceptional, we would have to change the town code that was related to maintaining. The driveway configuration, you also have to look at, we do have something similar to that up on, is it Ridgeville Drive? Similar, they're just duplexes with the closed driveways together. They do have a lot line and they do have lots there, but the driveway, we do have that, examples of that in town already. If they do zero lot lines, it has to be five, has to open up the space and more open space to, to that. And to address, I heard some of the Planning Commission concerns with the price, the market rate price of it, unfortunately, if we want a viable downtown, those townhomes need to be that price, unfortunately. At one of the MML classes we took, first or second year I was there, we had a class on redevelopment of downtown, make it viable. And what makes downtown viable for people living there is basically they need to make two to three times the average living wage for the area, unfortunately. So a six-hundred-thousand-dollar townhome will probably bring in the people that have the money to spend it downtown. And that's what makes downtown viable, is to have the population around there to walk in, make it viable, to come in and spend at the restaurant, spend at the brewery, and things of that, that nature. But I would say as proposed and within listed exceptions or being requested, this, this plan is not viable for, for the site, unfortunately. Also, there is no stormwater management located or listed on that plan, so that would have to be addressed. I would like to know where it's coming from, where it's going to, where it's being proposed to be stored. Also, to Commissioner Martina, concerns with environmental, there is concerns there of asbestos in the slab, chromium contamination along the rail line in one spot, and the standard PHC or hydrocarbon related to the rail line due to the rail ties. I don't believe the concern of arsenic was even addressed previously, because that was not a concern. So there is probably concern with arsenic. So before we even proceed or consider this again, I would say we need some type of approved remediation plan from MDE before this even gets finalized. Thank you.
I'm just wondering, moving forward, should we, since we're doing the master plan, should we address a rezone to make this residential? No?
Hold on.
I just, Carl was like, no.
Mayor, I don't, maybe I'm steering the mayor's thunder, but we do not want to touch the rezoning of this property. That's what gave us the headache in the first place. That's why it was rezoned four or five years ago, back, no, four years, about three, three years ago to the, to the current zoning. It was, we tried to rezonate, the previous councils tried to rezonate, developer, not this developer, I'll say a developer at that time, took advantage of it. And that's how we ended up with the whole apartment mess.
Oh, okay, I see.
So I would say a rezoning of this property would, is, would be considered, but not very likely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Mayor Larry Hushare, the mayor of the town, live over on West Ridge Drive. Just a couple of questions for you, and believe me, nobody wants to see this rail trail go through more than I do, because I've been working on it since 2013, so. Ed, what you have said is that if it's not forty-eight townhomes, it doesn't work. And, and what I don't understand about that is everything we do is transparent, and if it's not, if someone thinks it's not, they can PIA us and we, we have to give up that information. So we don't know what you're paying for the property. And I don't understand why forty-eight is the magic number. Maybe the owner, like I said, I don't know what you're paying for the property, but maybe you go back to the owner and say, that's too much, because it isn't going to work for the town. Can you explain that?
So, is it on? Is it a green light? Nope. Okay, thank you. So, I mean, we have to demolish the existing structure, clean the hazardous waste, you know, take the hazardous waste on for the railroad, build the railroad path, you know, all these things aren't even the land price, right? So, so if the town wanted to take on the trail, you know, then we could do fewer units. I didn't say we had to have forty-eight. I said we need something like that.
Okay.
Okay. So we want to be flexible and work with you on a win-win solution. But, you know, things cost a lot to make those kind of changes to a, to a, you know, hazardous waste site. So that's, that's why, if we don't have a certain velocity, it just won't work.
Okay, so you're saying the majority of the cost is in remediation, not purchase price?
Well, I mean, it's, 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 I mean, there is purchase price, but that's not the driver. I mean, it's the cost of building, it's the cost of getting staff out there and, and doing everything. I mean, it's, if you only have five townhouses, it's, it's just impossible to bear those kind of expenses. So, you know, if it's single families, it might just be four units or something. So it's impossible to take on the site without a certain amount of velocity.
That's, that's a fair answer. Second question, kind of geared more toward the staff, town attorney. When we factor in open space, we do not include HOA property. Is that a true statement?
That's correct.
Okay. So my question is, when you have a development like this and you are bringing in a hundred people and those three acres are going to be HOA property, do they assist with our open space deficit?
The town, the town wanted it to be town-owned.
Can I, can I have Barney answer that?
Well, let me answer what the staff told us. Staff said they wanted it to be town-owned open space. The HOA would most likely take on responsibility, we believe, to maintain that open space to the level that the residents expect, as opposed to what you might see in an open park.
Okay. All right. But is that the way you see it, Barney?
No.
Okay.
Can't say I do. Open space is something the town would own, would maintain.
Okay. All right, fair enough. And so with forty-eight townhomes, John, townhomes, is it two-point-seven-five per house?
That's the factor we use, two-point-seven-five.
So we're talking a hundred and thirty-two residents, and my question is, I don't see three acres up there that is coming over to the town.
Senior housing is two per unit. Townhome market rate is two-point-seven-five. Senior housing, town code, two.
Okay.
Say that when there's four bedrooms.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying, Ron.
I'm going by town code, and that's what is in Barney's use of computation.
Okay, well, I'm going by my town staff. So, all right, well, I appreciate it, but I, this density is, is, is too much for that property. You know, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And, and that's regrettable, because, believe me, I want the trail to go through. But what doesn't work, doesn't work. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Good. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to recommend to the zoning administrator that he reject the application on the basis that it does not meet applicable zoning requirements.
I'll second. I will. Oh, sorry. Do you want to?
All right.
I don't care. I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Let me get a vote.
Would you repeat the... I make a motion to recommend to the zoning administrator, because the origin of this action was the zoning administrator seeking our counsel. I make a motion to recommend to the zoning administrator that he reject the application on the basis that it does not meet applicable zoning requirements.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. All those in favor of this motion, let be known by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed?
Only because I don't really understand it.
Understand, understand. All right.
I mean, it's just...
It passes. Okay.
Thank you for hearing our...
Absolutely.
...application. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and the way you went about it. Okay. All right. Let's see how much we can do in a little under an hour. I'm going to take a look at 2023, ordinance is 2023-30 and 32. These refer to the mixed-use district. Provisions relative to open space. Let's see, maybe one at a time. Yes?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the Harbors is really the only one that's impacted by this, so if you would allow us, we'd like to go with Mary Collins.
Okay, this is relative to 2023-30?
So.
Okay. All right.
And again, this information was forwarded to you by email. It also was in that additional packet I put in front of you before the meeting, the letter that was sent by Pleasance on July the 27th.
Yeah, so I just wanted to go through that a little bit.
Make sure that Mike's got a green light on it.
Clark Wagner, Pleasance Development, just wanted to get this on the record, that addressing ordinance 2023-32, mixed-use district. First and foremost, we'd like to address the ill-timed and unwarranted effort to change the MXD simultaneously with the town's review of our pre-concept sketch plan for Mount Airy Crossing. It's important to note that Pleasance has been working with the town of Mount Airy on this development for the Beck property for the better part of the last year. Since we first submitted our initial pre-concept sketch plan last fall, we've communicated and collaborated with the town in good faith, with a firm belief that open and honest dialogue with the town would, would help us plan a mixed-use community that truly meets the needs of the town under the existing MXD zone. Let me just run through a little quick review of where we've been. So last October of last year, we submitted our initial pre-concept sketch plan. Following that, in November, the town requests that we restart the public planning and review process with a charrette meeting. We had that meeting in January at the town's request and direction. In February, following that meeting, the town requests that we host a multi-day charrette to garner more public input. We spent March and April planning a three-day charrette, which was held at the end of May at the American Legion, you'll probably all recall, at great expense. It was over a hundred thousand dollars for us to, to put on that charrette. And a hundred and fifty people attending, and some attending all three days. We spent June and July revising the pre-concept sketch plan in response to feedback received during the three-day charrette, and that plan was submitted a short time ago. So not included in that little chronology are two separate proposals to modify the MXD zone, which were considered for adoption but ultimately failed to win approval. Each of those proposals, like the most recent one, ordinance 2023-32, would have effectively changed the zoning rules midstream while existing proposal, our existing proposal, was in the public review and approval process. It's undeniable that the latest proposal to change the MXD zone is once again targeted at our project. In essence, it's an attempt to circumvent the town's land development and planning process by changing the zoning rules to force further changes in our project. It's an attempt to use legislation to replace the work of the Planning Commission and the town's existing planning and development process. We find this to be unfair, but also it runs counter to the open and collaborative spirit that I referenced earlier and sets a, a dangerous precedent for the town. It's clear that the town's current MXD zone and its current planning processes are working. The revised and updated pre-concept sketch plan for Mount Airy Crossing is proof that an open and collaborative process under the existing zone can result in a better plan for the community. And in, the second part of the letter goes through some of the changes we made to the plan. We've reduced the overall housing density by ninety units to a total of four-hundred-and-ninety-two homes, three-hundred-and-fifty-two of which will be age-restricted for fifty-five and older. We replaced the, all of the market rate residential on the east side of the property with senior residential. And we, we actually continue to get comments from seniors since we put up our website in favor of senior housing, which we heard at the charrette over and over again. We reduced the density on the east side of the property by fifty-five percent, a substantial reduction. We adjusted the lots of the, the single-family lots on the west side of the property to be more in scale with adjacent existing lots on Carroll and Lewis Court, Carroll Avenue and Lewis Court. In terms of open space, we increased the open space overall to twenty-five-point-five acres, which is twenty-eight percent of the property. We preserved a larger area of woodlands on the east side behind the Twin Arch Shopping Center. In terms of commercial, we were asked to split the commercial on both sides of Route 27 to better balance the commercial, so we did that. So we have some commercial on the east side, some commercial on the west side. And we have a, an area on the west side of two-story buildings in the commercial area to be more like the character of downtown. We also included potential for a future bridge or tunnel to be built by the town on, along Center Street, under or over Route 27. So we respectfully request that the commission table this ordinance until our pre-concept sketch plan is approved, or that you modify the ordinance so it's consistent with our plan that we've put so much time and effort into. that we've put so much time and effort into. Thank you very much. And the, the only thing I would add is that we have attached comments that are specific to the, the ordinance, and I'll let Cecily talk a little bit about that.
I want to briefly, hi, Cecily Bedwell, thank you, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. So I'm going to specifically address the open space requirement. The MXD ordinance was adopted by the town with a 10% open space requirement, as that's an amount that's appropriate for mixed-use zones. Best practice information was researched and provided, including by us, Design Collective, during the 2018 Downtown Vision Plan for the benefit of the town to arrive at that percentage. It wasn't arrived at arbitrarily. It was researched and recommended by our firm before we started working with any development team. In fact, during the vision, okay, sorry. So this 8% open space for MXD is based on not only best practice research, but our own work, adopted plans and implementation of those plans for and in other jurisdictions, including Baltimore County and Prince George's County, amongst others. The town proceeded with the 10% and adopted the ordinance accordingly. The suggestion to increase to 20, 25%, and now 40% for MXD seems incongruently to be based on residential zones only. And oddly, the 40% is even higher than several of the residential zones, including those with the lowest allowed density. This suggestion is opposite of what's expected from a planning standpoint. Whereas zones progress from center of town to the edge, one would expect an increase in required open space, not a decrease. And as a corollary, less required open space towards the town center. Towards the town center, one would expect plazas, squares, greens, playgrounds, and similar open spaces. Towards the edge of town, one would expect greens, parks, recreation courts, and fields. Minimally, by the suggested logic or approach of this ordinance change, commercial areas should be eliminated from the calculation for open space. If the commercial area subtracted from the net developable area, then the acreage would be 77.26 acres, and the 40% open space requirement would be 30.9 acres. However, the most reasonable open space requirement for MXD should be no higher than 25%. And again, I would go back to saying 10% is appropriate for MXD. I just don't know where, where the 40% is coming from, what best practice it's based on, what type of planning guidance and precedent is being referenced to suggest that. It doesn't align with anything that I know from MXD, which I've been working with for 27-plus years. Do you want me to go on to the other piece? Okay. So that, just, that's the note on the open space. The next piece of the adjustment is talking about allowing an adjustment based on only, only upon unique features of the parcel, while at the same time requiring, requiring that that adjustment is more beneficial to the needs of the community, which seems contradictory or minimally problematic. Typically, if a parcel has a constraint, for example, that does not allow the required percent of open space, it's based on that constraint alone that an adjustment is approved, not on some additional unmeasurable requirement, such as providing more community benefit. Secondly, what's the reasoning for the change from applicant to property owner? This is problematic as development submissions are made by an applicant, which may be different, a different entity than the property owner, meaning the property owner may not be at the same, may not be the same as the applicant, may not be involved directly in the entitlement process. So our request is that this paragraph should be left as is in the current MXD zoning.
And I think the last piece was the, the requirement for no greater than five units in a row of, of townhouses, so why don't you go ahead and talk about that? We, we gave you some photographs of different kind of communities.
Okay, so lastly, within the Mount Airy Crossing Plan currently, oh, sorry, let me, secondly, why is the shift from, shift from the maximum of seven attached townhouses in a building to five? Within the MXD zone, a pattern book is required. And while it's best practice to limit to seven units, and, and we've abided by the current ordinance, we're not objecting to that, we don't understand the reduction to five. Reducing beyond the seven unit per, per building doesn't add value. And there are much more salient criteria that have far greater impact on the building criteria, on the building character, such as massing breaks, step backs, facade material quality, window alignment, proper detailing, all of which will be included in the pattern book for the Beck property, which will be approved by this body. That is to say, there are many poorly designed townhouse buildings with five units or less. And there are many six- and seven-unit townhouses that are aesthetically pleasing and would contribute to Mount Airy. We did bring some examples of six- and seven-unit from a community that we were the master planners of, not the architects. We wrote the pattern book, and we approved them. The last one is a, is a black and white, so I'll hold that one back. So we'd just like to show these to say, you know, these are six- and seven-unit townhouses. They are guided by the pattern book, which has criteria for step backs, massing, articulation, materials. And again, I think that's much more salient, and that will come at the concept plan level. And we ask that that be maintained.
Thank you. Have to answer any questions?
Yeah, any questions for them? All right.
One last.
There are, there are a number of issues within the ordinance as it's written that really take and mix apples and oranges when you add percentage of open space in a table that's based on residential and reduction of lots by mixing that percentage in there. There's also issues of how it's being, trying to define the percentage of commercial versus residential. And working with these formulas now, I can tell you that it, it's not the way it's being done in here as a cookie-cutter approach. There's just a lot to unpack, which leads us to this whole issue of what I term fairness. We're going into a public hearing, and now somebody in the town wants to change the code and restart the entire process. I don't understand why we don't go through the public hearing process before, and at least a workshop or two with the town council to determine whether or not there ought to be changes in it. There, we seem to be hell-bent, for lack of a better term, of, well, we didn't succeed the first time, let's try it again to make a change. Let the process play out to see whether or not a change is needed.
All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, could I just make a quick?
A quick question?
Yes. Sean, just real quick. So on the, on the consideration of the, of the, of the fairness, I think that calls into question, what does the law say with respect to, and I'll use the phrase grandfathering, just so that I try to grasp fairness in the context that you're offering? Those things which are in motion should not have to conform to changes subsequent to their journey having begun, grandfathering. And so I believe in that question and using that term, the law says grandfathering of ongoing projects in this state is granted when a permit has been issued, a plan has been approved, and in the ease, most easily understood condition, construction has begun. And so if I've got that correct, deferring to the town attorney with regard to the term vested, you're vested in this development, we are not yet at that point, are we?
Correct.
Okay. So again, I'm trying to weigh the fairness, and I'm trying to weigh it in the sense of what the law says with respect to granting grandfathering. And we haven't, we haven't met that bar yet. So that's my objective view of, of, of the comment in consideration of it. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Sean Kelly again. I'm a town resident here on the, on the Frederick side in the Westridge community. I wanted to address a statement that was made, and then I have comments about 2023-30. There was a statement made along the lines of the council adopted MXD and the open space requirements. That's not an accurate statement. Two councils ago approved the MXD ordinance. And two of those former, former council members are on the rec, well, have stated that they did so knowing they had the mechanism of the current open space requirements in place as a mechanism to govern the density in MXD. The next council, I'll just stick to putting it plainly, decided to, that they had to change the open space requirements for this project specifically, the Beck project. And that's why we're here. So that's a good segue to my comments on 2023-30. You all have a rare opportunity to take the next step in correcting a mistake. Half of this commission has turned over in the last two years since the MXD open space requirement was changed to 10% of gross acreage. Two of you voted for that amendment, but you can repair that, you can repair what was done. You can right the wrong. The commission and council members who may have swayed you last time aren't here now. There's no elected official pushing the agenda anymore that meant mortgaging the town's identity in the name of connecting a road. So please, again, you, you can make a statement tonight to the people and undo that mistake. You get a rare mulligan, so please use it. Thank you.
Hello, Nicole Moon, live off of Wendy Knoll in Mount Airy Limits. Sean said a lot of what I was going to say. Just, I have full faith in this planning commission, in the new members and the old members, and full faith in our town council, our current town council, as we had a very good election. They are doing what the citizens want, and I think that's what we always need to remember. And when the developer likes to come up and say, you know, we're not working with us, and you have to do it this way and that way, at the end of the day, it's for the town, and it's for the town's citizens and what they want. And we have a lot of issues facing our town right now. We have water issues, we have, I mean, schools are still always going to be an issue at this point. There's a lot of other issues. APFO is put in place to protect our town. And I think right now, especially with our water issues, is not the time to let things slide. And so this is a way, as Sean was saying, of righting the wrong. This is a way of, of fixing the mistake that was made, because it was, it was a mistake. There's a reason why those council members are not on the council any longer. And so I fully support 2023-30. I think that there should not be waivers to our APFO, that is, to protect our town, protect the future of our town, looking at what's going on in Newmarket. I'll be curious to see what happens to their town, but we can protect ours. And so I fully support it. Thank you.
I have comments.
Okay, I have some comments on 2023-30. So one of the problems with the mixed-use ordinance is the 20, the proportion 25%, 75%. And, and what that does is, you know, as we have here, we have 74% residential and 26% commercial. And then, of course, you have the issue with the open space, because if it's 10% across the board, it's not going to be the equivalent of, anyway, I think you know what I'm saying. So my, my back-of-the-envelope estimate is that it would be approximately 36 acres of open space. Is that what you, that might have been what Cecily said, I'm not sure. However, the, someone brought up in the beginning, might have, I don't remember who it was, but it's absolutely true, is that we shouldn't be doing, we shouldn't be planning through ordinances. And that's exactly what some of us were very vocal about when that happened, specific to this property, and I can't remember the names of the ordinances. I think it was fall of 2021, where some of us went and spoke out against the ordinances, which basically put this property into the MXD ordinance without going through the master plan, and then did the waiver of open space, which actually did not end up happening. So we were opposed to that, because we are the planners. But that doesn't mean that we should keep doing it. So I, you know, I'm opposed to this, not because I don't agree there shouldn't be more open space, I'm opposed to the way this is being done. And I think that it can, we can go through this, the hearings and the workshops, and deal with it. And there's, and I'm not happy, I'm not happy with all the senior housing, unlike other people. But there's a process, and it is not last-minute ordinances, and it doesn't matter that they're not vested, and it's not, has nothing to do with grandfathering. So I think that if we want to be, you know, if we want to have a clean and ethical process that we will dispense with all these ordinances and go through an actual planning process, so. That's my comment.
Tim Marshall, 312 Brigade Court, also a sitting member on the town council. Full transparency, this was my ordinance. I brought this ordinance to my very first meeting, because when I ran, that's exactly what I said I was going to do. And if you know, I got 90% of the vote. So I, I don't think that was because they liked me, I think that's because they probably agreed with what I was saying. Fact of the matter is. Thank you. Fact, fact of the matter is, what Sean said is right. We are here to right a wrong. While I understand Pleasance stating that this is only because of them, it's not all because of the Beck property. I'm worried about the potential of Harrison-Lashir. That is 290 acres. What do you think they're going to want to do? They're going to want to change the zone outside of the master plan, like they did. They're going to want to go for MXD, like they did. And then they're going to want to build on 290 acres where they only need to provide 29 acres of open space. That's my concern. The Beck property is 80 acres, okay, number one. Number two, when this ordinance was presented at the town council and got seconded, there was no pre-concept plan. You removed the first pre-concept plan after the charrette, and you just now provided a second one. So there was no pre-concept plan when I brought this ordinance to the table. Period. So what I'd like to say, and I kind of wrote some notes down. Chairman Butts just stated that open space is a major concern for this commission when speaking to the Werman property. Due to the fact that the town is inadequate by 88 acres, this is your opportunity to prove that that statement is correct. This is your opportunity to right a wrong in an ordinance 2021-16, which was created with one specific property in mind. And I quote from the meeting, "If this ordinance doesn't pass, this project is dead." That was a quote from a sitting council person at that time. That is passing an ordinance specifically for one meeting. We are correcting that mistake with this ordinance. Every zone in our community outside of the DTZ that has a residential component, I ask you, does MXD have a residential component? you, does MXD have a residential component? Then it's residential. Must adhere to a three acre per 100 due to the fact that we are inadequate by 88 acres when it comes to our town's open space. At three acres per 100, we are still not even acquiring more open space to lessen that inadequacy. We are only ensuring that it doesn't grow. Okay? We're not fixing the problem, we're just ensuring that it doesn't grow. It is important for us to understand that once open space as a commodity is taken, it cannot be given back. You dig on that piece of ground and you put a building in that, in that piece of property, you're not getting that open space back. It is a permanent solution, which I would actually call a problem in this stance. We can never undo that. So for me, that commodity must adhere to the strictest of guidelines when it comes to our town and our community. And I would also remind you that all of us as elected officials, as appointed volunteers, and as towns employees and staff, our responsibility is not to the developer, our responsibility is to the residents and the community that we serve, and that is it. And I would ask yourself this, what do you think the residents want? And I'll answer, they want exactly what this is, because that's what they voted for.
I'm, I'm the author of 2023-32, so you can take care of 30 and then come to 32 after that, and then I'll get up and speak on that unless you were doing both at once. But I'll wait till you finish up with 2030, and if we have time, I'll get up and speak. If not, we'll visit it next month.
All right. Any other comments on 2023-30?
I want to just comment that, that before Tim Washabaugh was even on the town council, I told them all that that was a special law that was unconstitutional under the Maryland Constitution, and they voted for it anyway. And then I told the acting mayor, who was also the chair of the town council, not to sign it, and to wait until the new mayor came in, and he signed it anyway. So, so I agree with you on that, I'm just.
Now is your opportunity to fix it.
I have a clarification question. So in 2023-30, it says gross, 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 and then in 2023, since you're both here, it talks about net. Which one? I mean, should we keep it consistent for both of them, or? Sorry, sorry. I'm so sorry. So in, since both of the authors are here, so you have 2023-30, and it talks about gross acreage, and maybe I'm just nitpicking, but then in 2023-32, it talks about net. Should it be consistent, gross or net, or, I'm just trying to figure out how to apply that to the ordinances?
Commissioner Member, if I'm remembering correctly, there are two separate, the three per 100 is a totally separate portion of the code, I believe. Tom can correct me if I'm incorrect on that. Why it's gross, I cannot say, that was drafted before. Mine in 2023 is net on the chart, that is what's currently as drafted, I believe, on that chart is net developable acreage currently. So I just added the MXUCC and the MXD on that chart and left net as is. So, and if you look at all the other zones within the town for the residential or commercial or residential, I believe the majority of them have net in it. Why the three per 100 gross, I cannot say. The only thing I can think of is it's gross normally when you're talking with open space gives you a larger percentage in your favor, I believe. And also, if you look at it, it's, if I'm understanding the code correctly, the three per 100 is when we're in a deficit. This chart might be for when we are, have been deemed adequate, but I'll let the town attorney maybe clarify that, because when we, when we start talking about those two, it gets confusing is what, what we use when we use it. So that's the only thing I can think of is why there's a difference in gross versus net.
So 2023-30 seeks to change the threshold that qualifies a development for an open space adequacy, inadequacy waiver when the town is inadequate. Reason that the current code for mixed use districts goes by gross acreage, 10% of gross acreage, because that was corresponded to what the MXD ordinance imposed as a requirement in all circumstances, whether adequate or not, for MXD, 10% of gross acreage. Why gross? It's exactly correct, because gross would yield more acreage of open space, if you calculated that on gross as opposed to net developable acreage. 2023-30, however, proposes to change that, so it's striking the provision that talks about 10% gross acreage, and if passed, would require MXD development as well as MXUCC developments in order to qualify for consideration of a waiver to three acres per 100 persons proposed on the develop, and that qualifies them to ask you for a waiver. That's what 2023-30 does. 2023-32 seeks to change the amount of open space that in any circumstance, adequate or not, the MXD or mixed, the MXD development would be required to have. Currently under code, it's 10% of gross acreage. This proposes whatever it says, or 40% of net developable acreage. So they're two different ordinances doing two different things.
I think if you try to combine both the ordinances, you're going to get confused. Yeah. 2023-30 is on the top of the agenda right now. I said, look at that. What I am speaking of is what is allowed to happen when we are inadequate, meaning when we are at a deficit of open space. That waiver that you guys have, that waiver threshold allows people to build as if we are not in a deficit. That doesn't make sense. When we are in a deficit, there should be more straight guidelines to protect the open space that we are losing, day by day, year by year. Okay? Because the senior letter we're going to run. So we need to protect that open space when we are inadequate, and every other residential zone outside of the DTZ requires a decree by 100. And that's why I ask, is there residential in MXD? Yes, it has a residential component, therefore is a residential zone, and should adhere to the same amount of space. So I think that if you try to look at both of them at the same time, you're going to get confused. Let's focus on 2023-30 right now, and then when we, which is if we're not inadequate, and then you don't know. So mine is only for the provision of the waiver, that they would have to be in a threshold to get set waiver when we are.
Mr. Chairman? And Tim, while you're there, if I can rephrase just what you said, as currently written, I'm referring to dash 30 now, okay? Strictly the first one.
I can talk loud.
Okay. As it's currently written in our code, the code conveys a bit of a conflict or difference with regard to MXD and all other zones, because it treats MXD exclusively for the 10% rule in consideration of a waiver, whereas all other zones, three acre per 100. Is that another way of saying it?
Correct, and.
All the zoning into the same criteria to consider a waiver.
And let's also remember that when the MXD zone was created, even the people that created it, some of which are in this room, spoke against 2021-16, the night before a new mayor was to be elected, and said that we would have never brought this zone to the table with the thought that they could use it to build without acting like we are inadequate, meaning they had a three by 100 in the MXD zone until 2021-16 came along. Those are the creators of this ordinance that brought it to our town.
Fair enough.
They would have not, they would not have approved it based on a 10% waiver. Any more questions? Be here all night.
Any more comment or feedback on 2023-30? Okay, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-30 as written, or we're recommending to the council.
Okay, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Right, the motion has been made and seconded. The PC referred 20-20, 2023-30 to the council. All those in favor, if you know by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, okay. Yes, sir.
By referring, you mean a favorable recommendation?
Exactly, a favorable recommendation.
Yes, a favorable recommendation, yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
It was all, it was me and.
It was all, all but.
I'm the name tonight. Oh, I thought that was one. Thank you.
All right, we've got a little bit of time. Let's see what we can do on 2023-32. 10:30. You ready? Again?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I was, I was going to wait for responses and, or questions or whatever you want, but I'll go through the ordinance, I believe, on the points that were picked out. The 40% in the chart, as you said, is, as he said, as the town attorney indicated, is for when we're adequate and not adequate. If you look at the other classifications, R5 and R7 are the other areas of town that allow a denser development, and they are at a higher, higher allowed percentage. The 40% is taken into consideration, there is commercial component within the MXD and MXUCC zones, that's why it's at a lower. Also, 40% was just a starting talking point. If you all see as a more interested or a lower number or something, I'm fine to discuss, but as the developer indicated under net develop, if I understood what was said, if it was 40%, after all the commercial and everything is taken out, it would be 77%, excuse me, 77 acres of net, 40% would approximately be about 30%. They're close to that already, so it falls within what they're able to do even when they've been, when it's been deemed inadequate. So it is feasible, it is within range, 40% is a viable decent number. It allows for the commercial development. I would be willing to, you know, even maybe potentially 30, 35, 35 to 40 would be a viable number, still allows a good number of acreage, and if I believe I did my math right, it's approx, it might be the three per 100, depending on the multiplication factors you use, depending on the type of houses, it equals out to be about 40%, maybe the 30, the three per 100 might be a little, little bit higher. So as an MXD ordinance, for the density of 40%, it's a viable number. It's 35, it's really up to what you all decide to put there. On what I, number one, the request for adjustments and stuff, those things are pretty much existing wording, and if I remember my talking with the town attorney, it was more clarification instead of reduction, it's adjustment, you know, you can say a reduction, whatever, it is adjustment, it's just lowering and changing it. Also, instead of the applicant, the property owner, we would, I'm not sure if the town attorney can correct me, would there be any difference between the applicant and property owner, or would it be better to leave it as a property owner? Because I can get what they're saying, the applicant might be a little bit different than the property owner, so I'm not.
I didn't appreciate great difference, but I, you know, I don't know.
Okay, well, maybe we can put a pin in that and come.
Consistent with what other sections say.
What, the property owner?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was like more of, in this section was just more of a clarifying language was put in there, there's, town attorney just indicated more clarify and bring it into consistency with other sections of, of the town code. Let me see, the next page is, there is one change. This was done before the cannabis ordinances were presented. It was banning cannabis sales as a non-permitted use in the MXD zone, but I believe we can leave it in there, just, it collects some belt and suspenders language later, maybe, depending on what happens with the cannabis language, with the cannabis ordinances. I would like to leave it in there, because it does ban the sale of cannabis in the MXD. On the density and the number of attached townhomes, I think it might have been confusing a little bit, because I'm just reducing from eight dwelling units per gross to seven dwelling units per net, which is kind of consistent with current townhouse code within, throughout the whole town. Excuse me, it's, no, that's the next one, the five. Max of seven dwelling units, I believe, it just lowers the density on the, on the overall property, makes it a little bit more consistent with surrounding neighborhoods and other areas of town, and maybe provide a little bit more chance for open space within the development. So that's why it was reduced from eight to seven. The max number of attached townhomes, no more than five dwelling units, were pretty much in line with current townhouse code within, and if you look at the pre-concept plan as presented, I believe most of the groupings in that plan is, are five units per grouping, there might be several that might have six to eight, but it is, by the plan that was submitted, it is doable for the, I want to say the developer to lower the number to five units per grouping in town, townhomes. And that's all I have to say about that, because that's all they brought up, so. Any questions? I'm not as wonderful as, as Council President Washabaugh is speaking, I respond better to questions than speaking.
I just want to give you my calculations.
Oh, that's fine.
Which I mentioned before, so I calculated senior housing as two person and the single family as four people, and I got 36 and three fifths acres of open space.
Okay, that's, I.
I think you can at least go down to that.
36, yeah, I'm, 36, what was that again? 36% or 36 acres?
36 and three fifths acres, yes. Just.
What's percent?
Just ballpark.
Yeah, what's, yeah, I'm.
Did the calculation.
Yeah, I'm not doubting your calculations, Commissioner Member.
Did you get 40%?
40% equals to me, I'm trying to figure out what, I probably used a little bit different to, with the, hold on, I did two different calculations, I got about 30, 32 acres.
Oh, look at that, 32, a little lower.
Yeah, I can't really remember how I, if that was probably.
I'm saying we're both up.
That might be the three per 100, I don't, I'm not sure. I got a couple of different calculations here.
I'm not validating my own mathematical abilities.
The 40%, if I did that correct, came up with about 36 acres.
It just come up pretty.
Yeah, the three per 100 might have been 40, but I will caution on the numbers and the calculations, everybody seems to be using different multiplying factors. Unfortunately, if, the question that, before we start getting into the exact numbers of open space, we first need to define the multiplication factors. I used. I used, as a general rule, what Mr. Thompson was using as two for the senior housing portion of it. That makes sense, but I don't believe the town uses that as an official multiplication number. For the number that was presented in the pre-concept plan, I used a 2.75, which is what the town uses as a general multiplication. If I did the senior housing right, I can't remember if it's the three per 100, it might have been the three per, it was 21 acres of open space with the other portion of it, the non-senior, it was about approximately 11 acres. Came to be about approximately 30, 32. But I don't want to get into the math that much because everyone seems to be using different multiplication factors. I'm not saying I'm the world's best mathematician, but if someone could sit there, yeah, but I'm, I'll say that's it on that. Yeah, go, oh, sorry, I did it. Sorry.
Okay, numbers matter. The thing is, you know, we need to, to have something to work with. We're in the process of doing a plan. I understand we're not, you know, vested by a definition, I get that. I think what the developer is saying, they've invested a lot in this effort to proceed with a plan in good faith to meet the current ordinance. That is what we are saying with that. We, in and above what the ordinance, they conducted a three-day charrette on their dime to proceed, radically changed the plan to adhere to the comments we received and shifted things to abide by that based on the input. That's what we were asked to do. Listen, revise the plan in the ways that we could revise it and proceed. We're asking to proceed. I will say that, we did the math, 40% open space requirement would equate to 35.58 acres, which is 10 acres more than what's currently provided on the plan. And that's even when we increased the acreage by three and a half acres from the pre-charrette plan to the charrette, the actual charrette plan. So this isn't, you know, I mean, I know we're throwing out numbers and we're doing this, I think, not we, in an arbitrary way that is not based on best practices, that is not based on good planning precedent, which has real impacts. And we're trying to save a lot of open space, tree save area, we increased that, we moved commercial over, we did radical changes to abide by the plan, and it's just becoming less about good planning and more about a numbers game, which has no real bearing on what good planning is all about. You know, this is supposed to be MXD, it's supposed to be different than a single-use residential zone. So minimally, if you're trying to base something on a residential zone, exclude the commercial from the calculations. Otherwise, it's, it's irrelevant, it's arbitrary, and it's not founded on anything. So it's, you know, it really does matter what we're talking about. And to say that we're basing something because of residential at 40% when that's for residential-only uses previously, it makes no sense from a planning standpoint. It just doesn't. And I'm, I'm, I am getting frustrated because I don't understand the logic behind these decisions being made and the, what this is based on. To me, it's just a stall technique to push this thing without taking action.
I think we're trying to save our open space or our deficit right now, and that's a huge part of Mount Airy. On top of it, we have water deficit, we are schools. I think there's a lot that goes into this, and I'm sorry that you're frustrated.
No, but I.
Have to look out for our town.
Right.
The town's best interest.
Yes, but we are meeting all of the adequate public facility ordinance. We did a preliminary at the request of the town. We're not even at the point where we really need to do APFO, but we did that above and beyond the typical requirements of the town ahead of the process to show that we are meeting that. We are doing extra work to ensure that. We are really here in good faith to do a good planning project that meets the intent of what was envisioned for the town. We are going above and beyond the requirements of the town. We are not adding to your deficit. We are trying to abide by what we are required to abide by. We've even said we will increase it, we just can't keep arbitrarily increasing it to the point of which it doesn't hold together as an MXD area. That doesn't benefit the town. It doesn't, it's not logical for the town. So we are trying to go above and beyond. We're not saying we're pushing through 10%. We've already said that we are exceeding that.
But you're not helping the deficit either. Sorry.
Yes. Can I make a recommendation that we table this one until next meeting or workshop it before because it's a lot to it?
Yeah.
And especially if we're doing numbers, I don't think anybody's got the capacity to look at that.
Can I just make a quick note about numbers? I was kind of poking around and trying to find what other places in Maryland, what other counties in Maryland have for open space. And I, Howard County had 30% gross area of the site. Everybody's different. Frederick County, and maybe Justin can verify this, new developments had one acre per 60 units. They do have an MXD, but it was no less than 30% of the gross. So, and then for Carroll County, just referenced us, saying 10% as, because that's how it stands as of the, the current. And then like Antarundale, seven units per acre. PG County didn't really have one. So, I mean, maybe we can look around and get some more guidance to be consistent.
Let's bring all these points to bear with reconvene, yes.
Yep, just, just to follow Martina with a couple of quick comments, and perhaps Ms. To say that open space in conjunction with well-designed commercial properties can enhance the attraction of that commercial property. So it's not exclusively of commercial calculus that we would want to think ahead as to what's the appropriate number, because is it, is it fair to say, or am I incorrect in saying, if you design a good commercial area adjacent to, say, a fountain, a park, those kinds of open space examples, certainly people are going to be more attracted to go and shop and dine there because of that, let's say, environment around the commercial strip? Or, because I think your argument is we should consider excluding the commercial.
No, what I'm saying is, if you're, you're mixing things, right? You're saying 40% based on your other residential zones. So I don't disagree with you that open space at the right quantity near commercial should be sized appropriately to that. You don't want big gaps in your commercial frontage, right? You want those small, meaningful open spaces near commercial. Completely agree with that. My point was about basing a calculation that was really applicable to residential only for MXD, which combines residential and commercial. If you're going to apply, it's like mixing apples and oranges, right? It's, you know, it should be, if you're trying to abide by residential percentages, apply that to the residential, but the commercial shouldn't be based on that. So it shouldn't be one or the other, it should be, you know, be consistent in the logic.
And then one last question, just so, again, I'm seeking clarification. The part of your argument that talks about the reasonable planner would want to increase the open space toward a municipality as we go from the center of the dense town to the perimeter of the boundaries of that town. I think, did I phrase that correctly?
Generally, we think of a transect, right? We think closer in town towards the center, open space is more limited, it's sized, you know, smaller, more intimate, you know? And then when you get to the periphery, yes, you would have parks, recreation space, larger entities. It would erode a town's fabric to have a series of ball fields in the center of town to give an example.
So I, I absorbed your point well, and so where I am now is, this property does constitute the periphery of the town border. Isn't it on the?
No, it's a transition between.
You consider it a transition.
Right, I mean, you have, right.
Yes, not on the board. Okay.
No, I mean, this is, this piece goes right into downtown, so if I was looking, I mean, this is getting nerdy, but when we look at a transect, this is.
I'm thinking more so of Beck East. I'm thinking more so of Beck East as being perimeter-like or outer, right? And so in that regard, asking for an increase in the open space kind of coincides with your argument, for Beck East certainly.
Not to put a 40% on the whole property. I don't understand, that is not relevant. If you want to argue 10% closer to town and 30% on the periphery, perhaps that would make some logic to me, but then that would average 20, maybe 25%.
But let's meet in the middle with saying, but an increased amount as we go out from the town.
And we're, we're okay with that. We just, you know, it's like lock it down and make it somewhat logical.
All right, let's do this. Save these thoughts and save these points. All right, and let's begin there when we reconvene for our next meeting. And then we'll save majority of the time then for, for the two cannabis ordinances.
I have an announcement.
One last thing, yes.
Oh, I have an announcement. This is my last planning meeting.
Oh.
I have decided, well, I decided months ago that I needed to leave because I don't have time anymore, but then it just took me a while to be able to do that. So some of you will be really happy and some maybe not. But I still know a lot about zoning. Mr. Washabaugh, if you ever want to have a chat. So thanks for the fun all these years.
One more quick, it will be quick. Councilman DeMoto and I have decided to combine our cannabis ordinances. So it'll be one last thing on your plate. Basically, what we're doing is I'm, we're bringing my, the onsite consumption prohibition over to his under Section 112-dash-12. So we'll just, so you'll just have to deal, deal with one ordinance mainly next time. It'll be his zoning and stuff, if he has any further clarification questions.
So, so Carl, since I'm still here, I just want to say that if you limit cannabis to industrial rather than commercial, which one of them does, you're going to be hitting up against residential a lot more than if you include, if you include cannabis in the commercials.
Yeah, that's what we're trying.
Okay, just wanted to point that out.
Quickly, quickly.
Quickly, so, so to clarify, what, what we're doing is, we're using the, the ordinance that I introduced, which is focuses on zoning, that's going to be the core ordinance, and the ordinance that Carl introduced, I think, will go away, and we're taking the onsite consumption restriction component, just that component, and bringing that over to whatever the number is of the ordinance that I had introduced. So what I, what I would suggest is, if you're going to continue to look at that ordinance, focus on the zoning ordinance and get your head around that, and then the onsite consumption restriction piece that was in Carl's will be carried and plopped into the zoning ordinance.
Steve, is it, will it be possible for you all to get your heads together?
Yes.
And to provide a draft, John?
Yes.
He could get it out to us in advance of our meeting.
Yes, we will work with the town attorney and do that.
Or is it being taken for a future meeting?
It's a, on this, on this. Anything else is, is going to be postponed until our next meeting?
Are we going to discuss this ordinance more or is it come for the evening?
We're just trying to do some clerical cleaning up, but it's going to be discussed at a later date. We'll let you know.
Yeah.
If you want to reach out to me, I can let you know when it's going to be, sir.
Quick.
Can I just say one, one last thing before you?
Can I ask a process question first, before you say anything?
Sure.
So these two ordinances need to die with their recommendation, and a new ordinance needs to be drafted, Tom?
Can we integrate the both of them together? We're going to have recommendations on both ordinances, but to the town council. Town council then will do something. Most likely, it sounds like a reintroduction of 20, whatever.
Thirty-nine.
Right, with amendments.
Okay.
Those amendments being transporting.
One letter, two, two letters over.
They don't need to die, they, they can continue to, you know, hypothetically, they would say, on this ordinance, we recommend this, on this ordinance, we recommend that, but with amendments.
Yeah. So can we do that in a work session, or does it have to be in an open meeting like this, ultimately the next planning commission meeting?
You could do it on a works, I mean, it'd have to be open session, but it could be workshop or.
Right, so we could do that on August the 10th possibly as part of the master plan workshop, if we wanted to include that as part of it. Would it have to be a separate workshop?
No, you don't have, you could add it to.
So I just want to understand if we're going to be waiting until next month. My intentions are to try to get it back to town council as soon as possible so we can get something on the books, is the concern I have.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the answer is to that, and it might be doing a workshop on the 10th or possibly another workshop prior to our town, our planning commission meeting, so we can, or whatever.
If Steve and Carl can get their, their recommendations to, you know, for a joint draft to you by then. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm Charlie Mansfield, I live just outside the town. I would just like to encourage you that as you look at ordinances about open space, to really consider why there's open space. It isn't just because we like parks and recreation stuff, or we like, you know, pretty gardens and green grass and stuff like that. But it really affects the APFOs, and in particular, water is a huge, you know, concern in Mount Airy because of the recharge. You need space, and that's the, that whole three to 100 ratio, that's all because of recharge. And so as you consider, you know, changes to ordinances and everything, you really need to think about the importance of open space. So thank you very much, have a great night.
All right, is there a move to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.